Welcome. Co-Chair Nils will be joining us later. I just wanted to open up this public hearing on the superintendent's recommendations on enrollment and transfer. So we have half an hour allotted for this with folks signed up for two-minute slots each so we could hear from as many of you as possible. So shall we just go ahead? And Karen, you want to read the first two names?
This is Betty Izumi and Amy Thomas.
Great. So while you're coming down, I'll just read very quickly the public comment instructions. So thanks so much for coming tonight. We really appreciate you coming to provide your thoughts. We look forward to hearing from you, and we're going to be actively listening and reflecting on your comments. We're not going to respond to them during this hearing, but we will definitely be following up with us. And Board Manager Roseanne Powell is also here if you want some additional information. So you're going to have two minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. And then are we still -- do we still have the yellow light when it's a two-minute?
Yellow light when there's one minute.
Okay, so the yellow light will go off after one minute, and then at the red light we ask you to wrap up at that time. So thank you -- thanks again for coming, and you may begin.
My name is Betty Izumi, B-E-T-T-Y-I-Z-U-M-I. I am a parent of two children, one who's currently a third grader at Richmond. I'm also a faculty member at Portland State University where my research and teaching focus on nutrition and health equity. I understand the importance of the racial educational equity policy and the need to close the achievement gap. In full disclosure, I also have a three-year-old who I hope will attend Richmond with her older sister. However, I understand that policies are not meant to serve me and my needs, but that they are meant to promote education for the common good. I have read the superintendent's report. For all intents and purposes, giving preference to students who qualify for free and reduced price meals at focus option schools increases the number of low-income students who are enrolled at these schools whether or not they are given preference over siblings. Since this is true, why not enroll siblings first and then enroll low-income students? According to the simulations presented, the end result would be nearly the same. In addition, given that the data presented at the last board meeting were based on data from the last six to nine years, I urge the board to request five- and 10-year projections on how the proposed changes will impact future sibling enrollment and share these data with constituents. I suspect that over the long term, this policy may reduce opportunities for families to have co-enrolled siblings and thus have a negative impact on students, families, schools, and communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Amy Starr Thomas, T-H-O-M-A-S, and I have three children in the Japanese immersion program, two at Richmond and one at Mount Tabor Middle School. It saddens me to hear Richmond community's outspoken advocacy for this program be interpreted by some as self-serving, anti-equity, anti-diversity. Nothing could be further from the truth. Richmond wants to be part of the movement toward greater inclusion and equity in PPS. We applaud and support efforts to increase the number of FRL students at Richmond, but the immersion model must remain intact in order to offer the excellent program that has existed these many years to this new generation of learners. To do this, we need to put all siblings first during enrollment. Sibling preference for immersion schools is about more than maintaining family convenience or even supporting extended learning in the home. It is primarily about maintaining program viability. Immersion programs cannot sustain even small levels of attrition in upper grades, for it is extremely difficult to fill those spots due to language limitations. Upper-grade-level attrition due to fragmenting families undermines the immersion model. We can only continue to provide excellent immersion education if we retain all our families in the program regardless of their socioeconomic status. We project that if outreach is successful, we can easily double our FRL at Richmond next year and reach 45 percent within three to four years. We can be both diverse and strong if we do it right. You have the power to do this. Our parents need strong leaders to create solid policies that serve all our district's children. Our leaders need strong parents to support and implement those policies at a grassroots level. By prioritizing sibling preference at immersion schools, you empower program advocates to recruit new families with the credibility to look them in the eye and say, "We are here to welcome and support you, all of you, for the long run."
Thank you. Next two?
Chris Anderson and Matt Marjanovic.
No questions. I can't ask questions.
No, this is just a hearing.
No questions.
This is just a hearing.
They can't ask more questions.
No, please begin. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Chris Anderson, A-N-D-E-R-S-O-N. I'm the father of two children at Creative Science School, and I'm also the PTA president. I want to start out by thanking you guys for both the superintendent and the board for looking into creating a more diverse schools and for looking to promote equity within the schools. Schools are a place where we not only educate our kids, but it's a place where kids first learn about community and how to belong to something larger than them. And I'm going to say something that probably you weren't expecting the PTA president at Focus Option Schools to say, but I like a lot of what the superintendent is proposing and what SACC proposed. I like the fact that you guys are asking us to be more accountable. I like the fact that you're asking us to articulate, "How are we different from the local neighborhood schools?" I like that you are increasing the diversity of focus option schools. Creative Science School last year started getting together with parent focus option groups and teachers, and we proposed increasing our kindergarten slots for 20 percent for Head Start students to kind of create a more diverse community for us as well. The one thing that I really don't like, and it's, I think, a theme that you'll hear here, is that not prioritizing siblings first. When you don't prioritize siblings first, you mess with the school's community. You make it so it's not safe for parents to come in and be confident that they can engage in the community and that they can be sure that their siblings will come to the community first. I've looked at your projections as well, and it looks like that you could have sibling preference first and then the lower-income diversity as the second tier and still achieve your goal within the timeframe you're looking for. I ask that you please consider that and realize that when you change big bureaucracies, when you make decisions and don't get feedback from everyone, and you don't consider maybe some of the ramifications of what it might have to the communities and the focus option schools and other areas, that we need to make sure that we're providing the community and the educational opportunities for everyone.
Thank you very much.
Matt Marjanovic, M-A-R-J-A-N-O-V-I-C. I've got a script because I've only got two minutes, and I'm going to limit my comments to the changes to the focus option lottery. The recommendations affecting the focus option lottery are to demote the existing prevailing sibling preference rule, introduce a mechanical bias to favor approval of families with free and reduced lunch status, and improve outreach to historically underserved communities. Two of these require board approval, and only one of them is actually a necessary change. First off, as everyone here is going to say, the preference for co-enrolled siblings should be the prevailing preference for all families and all schools, all programs. And there are those in this room who say, "But we are preserving sibling preference," and that is simply not true. Sibling preference is being demoted behind preference for our free and reduced lunch applicants. As soon as sibling preference is not at the forefront, the lottery system introduces anxiety and doubt for every family that has more than one child, and that's about 80 percent of the families in Portland. What remains unexplained in all this is why the superintendent and her staff continue to insist that demoting sibling preference is even necessary since their own data prove otherwise. Last week, Carol Smith and Judy Brennan presented simulated data to try to assuage the fears that the new lottery scheme would affect families with siblings. Some board members looked at the charts and astutely noticed that it didn't seem a matter if the FRL applicants came first in line or not. I found the complete simulation results online and annotated them to show that what would happen if we just kept the co-enrolled siblings first. For five out of seven schools, it made absolutely no difference to just maintain the current prevailing sibling preference. For the other two schools, only one enrollment year for each school was modified, and overall 544 low-income applicants were approved even with siblings first versus 548 without. So the FRL preference appears to work just as well without having to demote the sibling preference, so why do it? That brings us to point number two, the specific preference for economically disadvantaged students. Note that, yes, between the current lottery and the proposed system, the number of approvals with FRL status has increased, but the applicant pool has not changed at all. The increased FRL preference doesn't make the lottery system any more equitable; it just cooks the books to make it look more equitable. It gives the district a way to say, "Look, we've got more students of color in our focus schools," without actually improving access to the underserved communities. And that is why I cut off, but the third recommendation where we improve the outreach is, I think, the most important one. And I was going to add one last step, which is going to go further and recommend that we implement a post-enrollment survey. Every October, November, have every enrolled family fill out a survey that asks which enrollment options they knew about, which ones they used, which ones they avoided, so that we know what the problems with the enrollment system actually are.
Great.
And I'm surprised we don't do that already.
Thank you very much. Next two, please.
Jason Lathrop and Michelle Cocker?
Yes.
Thanks for coming. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jason Lathrop. L-A-T-H-R-O-P. Thank you. I want to pose one point of confusion that I have, and I think others have touched on it. Excuse me. We've been told that under the proposed recommendation five, only a few siblings over a number of years would be affected. We've also been told that the sibling preference has to come behind the 45 percent FRL, or we won't make sufficient progress on the equity goals in a reasonable amount of time. With respect, I just don't know how both of those things can be true. The numbers don't work for me. I would love to have a better understanding of the numbers. I'm an analyst, and I look at numbers all day, but the algorithm is, at this point, blind to me, and it's hard for me to really evaluate what would happen next because we see a lot of tables, but we don't understand the order that these lottery mechanisms operate. If a FRL sibling comes in, does that retire some FRL quota first, or does that retire a sibling quota first? So with respect, we would love to know more. If putting the siblings in front of the FRL does not meaningfully change the numbers, then doing it this way is merely symbolic and creates an awful lot of angst and opposition for perhaps no actual policy outcome. And with respect, I'd urge you to reconsider that. I'm from the Richmond community, and I know you guys have heard from us. I just want to point out, it's because we see this as fundamental to our program, and many of our most vocal parents -- I really want to stress this -- many of our most vocal parents don't have a younger sibling waiting in the wings. They see this as fundamental to our program, keeping the families together. Cultural and language immersion is what they're protecting, not their own narrow self-interest. And if there's one thing I hope you can feel that I'm saying, it's that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Michelle Chaska. It's C-A-C-K-A. I'm all scattered with this guy. So I just wanted you to hear my experience. We tried our neighborhood school, which is on 82nd. We live out there. I tried it with all my heart. Like, I wrote grants, I volunteered, I advocated for my child to get services. And when I'd advocate for special ed services, they would say, "We don't do this extra thing," which I know that they do, and I would go with the right language, and I wouldn't get the services. And I got failed from the school in that way. I went in for tag services because my daughter tested for tag, and they're like, "We don't really do anything for that either." And so it wasn't the best fit for my kid because I went asking for help, and they said, "We can't help you." And so when you look at the enrollment, that's one narrow part of looking at, like, why are these schools failing? Like, part of its parents moving out and part of its poor administration. And that administration there has changed, and it's gotten a lot better in, like, two years. And the last point I want to make is, we're at Buckman now, and the language programs are great, and you want to do more language programs, and I appreciate that, but the art focus program is great because parents can come in at, like, third grade, and your kid isn't, like, automatically behind or automatically in, like, the neighborhood portion of it, not the special portion where people who have to be stable and stay in the same school for five, eight years can be. So why don't we take that program and take it to other parts of Portland as well because it's working so well, because every kid should be expressed? Another thing is, the K-8 model is great because you see, like, I like how Portland Public does K-8. It keeps kids younger, keeps siblings together, it supports a strong family unit, and if you're switching that, it just seems to go against that that you're doing too. And, like, back to the art thing, like, Portland voted for art, like, funding. Like, Portland likes the art program, and so we should recognize that. The la -- okay, well, it can be done. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next two, any speakers?
Next, we have Jake Harris and Neil Banman.
Hi. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Neil Banman, N-E-I-L-B-A-N-M-A-N. Thanks for hearing us. I'm a parent of a Richmond student. My wife and I are both Japanese-Americans, and we are pinching ourselves with glee that Portland Public Schools has a Japanese immersion program. It's odd, but wonderful, and I know I speak for many parents when we say that we get a lot out of it, whether we come from a Japanese cultural background or not. I have read SACC's report as well as the superintendent's. I'm very glad and thankful to the superintendent for not forwarding on their recommendation to introduce a geographical quota, which I think would have caused a lot of chaos without really adding much to the diversity goals. I'm actually a little bit ambivalent on the preference for free and reduced lunch. I see that that could present a lot of value, but for me, in reading both reports, I just haven't seen any serious look at what the implications are in terms of keeping the program sustainable. Like, Amy Starr Thomas brought up, we have a problem where if people leave the program, we can't replace them in later grades. And I just haven't seen the modeling to show what kind of effect that's going to have and what that's going to do to the school. It would be good to know if we had data on, like, what the attrition rate is divided amongst different demographics, people who live far away and for whom it's more inconvenient, people who have kids in different schools. If we had this kind of information, or if you guys would consider that kind of information, that would give you a better sense of how easy or difficult it would be to make these fairly sweeping changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jake Harris, H-A-R-R-I-S. Good evening. My wife and I are parents of a third grader at Richmond and a daughter who will hopefully be going into Richmond next year. I just want to say that removing the guarantee that siblings will be allowed in is saddening news for us both personally and what it means to Richmond. My concern, aside from my own child, is the future of Richmond. I worry that low-income families, the group this is designed to benefit, might actually be deterred if they learn that their other children might not be admitted. I also worry that the attrition will increase due to both tearing apart of families and the increased number of low-income and geodiverse families who historically change schools more often. Richmond is a very special place, and it's not fair to lump it into other focus option schools that are not based on language immersion. Please don't jeopardize this amazing program by removing guaranteed sibling preference.
Thank you very much. Next two, please.
The last name I have on the list is Christina Callen.
Good evening. I'm Christina Callen, K-R-I-S-T-I-N-A, last name Callen, K-A-L-L-E-N. And I have had the opportunity to work at Richmond for six years as a principal secretary. My kids went through Richmond and Mount Tabor. So my big thing tonight is, the district keeps families together. I have proudly said that for six years. So when people come in the blind lottery, to apply for the blind lottery, I always say, "Bev doesn't make backdoor deals. You either get in, or you don't." But the district keeps families together. So that's what I'm asking for tonight, is to keep sibling preference. We've had some trust issues, as you know. One of the reasons why we've had trust issues is because in 2013, a call went out for dual-language immersion families to come and talk about enrollment and transfer and immersion. Five of our parents went, and then they received an email that said it was canceled after the second meeting. I have the emails here, and said, "Regarding language and dual immersion, we'll keep you posted." Well, we didn't hear anything else until our PTA president heard about this whole SACC business. And people don't tend to hope for something if they're told it's been canceled. That's just kind of sad. So what I'm here to ask tonight is, put us to work, put us Richmond parents to work. I will dedicate a Saturday to you. I'm free. I'm not a budget line item. I will market our program to families of color, to the underserved, to the free and reduced populations. I'll work for you. So give me a Saturday during that open enrollment and transfer cycle. If you have a marketing strategy at Expo or at Convention Center, and I know that some of these Richmond parents would work for you, and we are free. So we have 771 volunteers at Richmond. We don't have a lot of money, but we have people, so we're rich. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else signed up?
I do not.
Okay, well, we have a few more minutes before our scheduled board meeting, so we could just sort of go and mingle and visit in the audience as, just for informal dialogue, before it starts at 6 o'clock. Otherwise, I'm going to adjourn the hearing.
Ruth, we have one.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I think I'd rather just go and chat with the folks. Come in for a few minutes. Yeah, does anyone else? I mean, there's a few more minutes left, or we could just come out and visit. Welcome, come on up.
Sorry. I'm a little late.
That's okay.
Apologize. Catch my black breath.
Absolutely.
I just finished a course at Portland Community College where I teach politics full-time. We finished at 5:00, and I had a student in crisis, so I apologize for being late.
No worries. Welcome. Just catch your breath, and then let us know who you are, and we'll --
I am Michael Sonleitner. I've taught full-time at Portland Community College for the past 26 years. I'm co-chair of the Peace and Conflict Studies Program at PCC. I am a candidate running for the Portland Community College Board of Directors in the next May election. I'm very concerned about educational issues. I wouldn't know about this one except for the Oregonian article, and I especially appreciate Steve Buell's comments as quoted in that article, and I hope that you were quoted correctly.
He liked him, I probably watched.
I urge you to go slowly on eliminating the lottery. I urge you, based upon my own experience, I was, as a parent many years ago, a co-founder among the original 20 parents that created Leonardo da Vinci Middle School, Arts Middle That's one of my babies. And one of the problems with that baby was trying to figure out a way that would equitably allow people to apply to transfer to that arts magnet opportunity. I then volunteered masochistically, I'm sure, for about a year and a half on a committee, perhaps not unlike the one that issued this report, a committee that established the original lottery. I'm one of those people from, like, 13, 14 years ago. I am sure you're aware that the original intention was to encourage a diversity of students transferring. I wonder if that has not panned out, whether there might be details that could be modified. One of our original concerns, to increase the variety of students that would be transferring, would be to give additional weight, kind of a weighted-in-the-lottery option for families who had children in reduced-price lunch systems. Relatively poor students are disproportionately non-white. We were very conscious that that might have a bias in favor of a non-white student being able to move more likely in the lottery system. I don't know what has happened to that weighted system. Perhaps it is not so weighted anymore. Perhaps the timelines could be modified. Perhaps greater outreach could be made to encourage people to participate in the lottery who are currently not applying to do so. The timeline is, consider this carefully, because the lottery was seriously and carefully considered and being implemented in the first place. I would like to see why it is not functioning as intended if in case, in fact, it is not. Don't throw this baby out. It was a long time with great effort being created in the first place.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Thank you. Anyone, did anyone else in the remaining -- because we're almost done with our time. Did anyone else want to testify in our last couple minutes?
Let us ask any questions.
Well, what I'm suggesting is we adjourn the hearing, and we can go and ask questions. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Steve.
... Good evening, everyone. This study session of the Board of Education for December 2nd, 2014 is called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers and to all of those in the audience who were here earlier for the comment session, session on enrollment and transfer. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. Student Representative Joswell is absent tonight. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and have public comment. Ms. Houston, do we have anyone signed up?
We do, we have six. Our first two speakers, Cara Colley and Jerry Eaton.
Okay, while you guys are coming up, I'm going to go ahead and read the...
I did earlier.
Looks like a new group, though. I think we'll just, just in case. Just in case our folks here are testifying who weren't here for the earlier hearing, I'll go ahead and go through the instructions. So, thank you very much for taking the time to come and speak with us tonight. We value public input, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen and reflect on your comments. The board will not respond to any comments or questions during public comment, but we've asked our board manager, Roseanne Powell, who is in the back someplace. There she is, Roseanne, back here, to follow up on issues raised during public testimony. Roseanne is available in the back, if you'd like additional information. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. You have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name, spelling your last name. For the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will come on right there in front of you. When you have one minute left, a yellow light will come on, and when your time is up, a red light will come on and a buzzer will sound. And we ask that you wrap up your comments at that time. We sincerely appreciate your input and look forward to hearing from you. So, go ahead, whichever.
Thank you. Shall I go? All right. Hello, my name's Jerry Eaton. I'm a teacher at Meek Professional Technical High School. That's E-A-T-U-N, by the way. Hello. I'm part of Alliance High Schools, and I'm alum of the superintendent's high school action team and a proud parent of a PPS student. I'm speaking to you today as sort of a preamble to the presentation that'll happen later tonight when Karina Wolf will present on behalf of all of us that... Uh-oh, hold on, Synergy just closed out on me. That should not count against my time. All right. She'll be presenting for all of us that operate under the banner of Alternative Pathways. I'm hoping to use my time as a frame for dialogue for you to have later with her and with Lorna Fassbrough, who is our principal, and to convince you to take some immediate action on, on some tangible things that we need. First bit of context, this is not my first time before you, that's why I'm going so fast. Many times before, I'm usually begging you not to cut another critical element. I'm glad to say I can finally say thank you. There are some significant reinvestments to our mission, and we've begun to see some of those rewards. We've added back staff positions, we've lost, we've used FTE in new ways to meet the needs of our students. Retention's improving. Gains in the effective realms are manifesting themselves in tangible academic ways, skills, learning credit, et cetera. But no good deed goes unpunished, and there have been some unintended outcomes to these changes. As we've grown our ability to meet the needs of struggling students, we've seen a radical increase in the number of students with IEPs in our classrooms, a 20% increase in the last year alone. Since October 1, my understanding is that 29 special-ed students have left PPS comprehensive schools. 20 of them have found their ways to our front door in that much time. There's not a lot of choices out there, as you know. We've lost three alternative schools in the last year. We love these students, and we bring all that we have to meet their needs, but we're drastically lacking some of the kinds of wraparound services that they need. Ironically, the kinds of services that exist in some of the schools, they're leaving. Community partnerships like SUN, Step Up, et cetera, mental health and health services, even adequate sped staffing. We don't have art or music, we lack PE facilities and equipment, and we have less than 20% of our former Vo-Tech CBE offerings. What we lack largely is diversity. If we're, we're approaching 50% sped population. That is not a diverse classroom environment, and that's exactly what the IEPs of these students are calling for. They need a diverse student body and a highly adaptive alternative learning environment, and we need the kinds of programs that will attract a robust, diverse student body, not just students that are really, you know, on the fringe of surviving in the comprehensives. So, the asks, we need more computers, we need more space, we're running out of space. We need a bigger building, we need to be able to operate after 5:00, we can't in our current location. Let's see what else, we need community supports. Accountability, students that leave comprehensive schools, those services that were there should follow them. And we need to attract a broader array of types of students. Larger, sorry, we need a long-term plan. We don't have a strategic way to meet the needs of non-traditional students. We have still a hodgepodge, and it's a smaller hodgepodge than we've ever had before. And I think we're losing an opportunity. If we don't start now to engage in a dialogue of what's going to happen next year and the year after, we need to think bigger, and we need to know it's going to be expensive, but that's the only way we're going to get to the kinds of goals that we've set for this district. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Cara Colley, my last name's C-O-L-L-E-Y. I live in the Chapman neighborhood, and my daughter lotteryed into the Spanish immersion program at Ainsworth, and I have a son at home who is four, who I hope will be able to go to Ainsworth. Both of my children are enrolled in the Eastern Band of the Cherokee Nation. I do support looking for ways to better serve historically underserved students, but I don't support that when it breaks up families. Is there a way to better serve low-income families while keeping families together? I say yes. I say keep the sibling preference in place and add the low-income preference after that. When we accepted the spot at Ainsworth, they asked us to make a K to 12 commitment, and at that time in 2013, the sibling preference was in place, and so we made that commitment. But now the school board is thinking about changing the rules. This feels very unfair to me, feels like a breach of trust. This possible change in the sibling preference has caused much stress and uncertainty to my family. Families that lotteryed in before this 2015 cycle, I believe, should be grandfathered in that were, grandfathered in with the rules that were in place before. But actually, I'm not just up here arguing for grandfathering in. I believe the sibling policy is good policy. It's good for low-income families, it's good for middle-income families, and it's good for rich, upper-class families. It's good for white families, black families, Latino families, Native American families, and Asian families. Families should stay together. I also, like a previous speaker mentioned, I do not follow your numbers. The superintendent report says 728 out of 732 siblings would have been approved had the low-income preference been in place. Well, first off, these are historical numbers, and the applicant pool is certainly going to change as more recruiting and outreach occurs. Secondly, if this is really about four spots, four spots, why cause such stress and uncertainty to families? Why not keep the sibling preference in place and let in all but four in low-income students? I want Portland Public Schools to be a place that tries to remedy inequality, but I, not if you do it by breaking up families. Keep the sibling preference in place and add the low-income preference after that. This is good for all families. And finally, my son and daughter know that I'm here tonight, and they asked me where I'm going. I said, "Well, the school board is thinking about not letting Ry, my son, go to Ainsworth." My daughter Sage, who's in first grade, has a message for you as well. I want my brother to go to the same school as me, so we can ride on the school bus together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Kat Caskey and Adonis Lomu.
Hello, thank you for taking the time to hear me today. My name is Kat Caskey, last name is C-A-S-K-E-Y. I want to tell you a little bit about myself. I am 27 years old, I'm a Portland native, and I'm a high school dropout. I went to Franklin High School, and I did really well my freshman year, I was on the honor roll. I got As and Bs, I did extracurricular activities. I did all the things that they say, well, when you success, not just academic, but also social. But we all know that life is not so cut and dry as that. And education is not black and white, and it's not one-size-fits-all. And I ended up dropping out when I was a junior. I've always valued education, so I'm sure everyone else here does as well. So, I went back as a senior, and I dropped out again. What proceeded was four years of feeling like a failure. And it wasn't until I drove down the street one day and I saw a sign for Portland Youth Builders. For those of you who aren't familiar with Portland Youth Builders, it's an alternative high school in southeast Portland. They focus on like job readiness, and I saw their sign, and I went to check it out, and it changed my life. I didn't fail in traditional, in the traditional education system because I lacked motivation necessarily or was unintelligent. I believe that there was a whole series of personal barriers in my life at that point that restricted my success. And PYB offered me emotional support, financial support, educational support, job readiness support, a whole series of wraparound services that is not found in, in any other educational institution that I'm used to. I ended up leaving the program and going to PCC. I graduated with an Associate's of Honors, and I, just this past May, graduated from Lewis and Clark College with honors. I now work as an AmeriCorps volunteer at PYB. So, I can speak to the importance of programs like this in our school system. Like I said before, education is not one-size-fits-all, and it certainly wasn't for me. I just want to end by saying that I get to work with students like myself every day now, and I can see the benefit from this program on them, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Adonis Lomu, L-O-M-U. First off, I'd like to start out by saying thank you to Superintendent Smith and other members of the school board by allowing me to talk to you today. When I first came into high school, I enrolled at Jefferson High School. I stayed there for two years, and while there, I received less than a 1.0 GPA. It's really bad. It's not because the work was too hard, it's always because I would put the work to the side and say I'd do it later, which never really happened, and probably was a motivation thing, never had it. And just last year, I missed over 37 school days, just last year, yeah. After getting an earful from my auntie and other members of my family about my future, I started noticing it myself. My future, as I know, was dropping, dropping at a dramatic rate. I needed a change, and I need it now. So, I decided to enroll at Alliance and Meek September this year. It was a really big day for me because it was a fresh start. It wasn't just a big day for me, it was also a big day for Meek because they just received, started a new program there called Discovery, otherwise known as Disco. Disco really helped me a lot with getting to know a lot of people that I usually probably wouldn't talk to, but then again, I talked to a lot of people. So, and also, one of the main things I learned in Disco was transactional communication analysis, which really helped me talk to people in new ways that I wouldn't really have thought about before. And it also helped because I plan on going to college to major in psychology, because again, I love talking to people. Nowadays, I am receiving at Meek a 4.0 GPA, which is a big leap from less than a 1.0. And it's not because the work is easy, it's the same work as you get at a normal high school, it's just, just the name, alternative high school. So, and I have not missed one day yet this year.
All right.
My plans now is to graduate high school and go to college. I'm thinking about majoring in math, psychology, and drama, because people say I'd be good at it. One of the biggest things for me because about going to college, you'd be making me the first in my family, my immediate family to go to college.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you both for your stories.
Our last two speakers are Daniela Hernandez and Travon Braswell.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Trevon Braswell, and I'm a senior at Mount Scott Learning Centers, Braswell, B.R.A.S.W.E.L.L. I started at Mount Scott in 2009 as a seventh grader, and I am graduating early at the end of January 2015. Mount Scott helped me find a balance between my home life and school. Some things I deal with outside of Mount Scott are living with my mom on disability, a father I've never met, gang influences, and housing that sometimes has mold, decomposing walls, and at times lack basic utilities. The transition into Mount Scott from bigger schools put me at ease. The small community at Mount Scott gave me the opportunity to connect with students and teachers while providing access to resources. This also helped me build confidence and gave me a space to express myself. Now I'm working on scholarships to attend college, and my plans for the future are to open my own barber shop while learning more about video production. I really don't feel like I would have gotten this in a bigger learning environment. Being able to have bonds with teachers has empowered me to be confident while working towards my own success. For this, I am grateful to Mount Scott for escorting my completion of high school and giving me the gas to find my driver in my future. Thank you for your support of programs like Mount Scott and for welcoming my testimony.
Thank you.
Superintendent Smith and members of the board, my name is Daniela Martinez Rosas, and I'm here to talk about my experience with the Teen Parent Services and Alliance at Meek. I've been with the Teen Parent Program for three years. The Teen Parent Program has been a huge support for me and many other teen parents in Portland. They provide daycare counseling supplies for our children and many resources. And help in reducing the stigma of being a teen parent in the first place. Thalia Sandino is one of the staff in the Teen Parent Service at Alliance at Meek. She is also one of the people who has helped me throughout my journey of being a teen mom. She has helped me and my mother a lot. She is always checking on her teen parents, making sure we're doing good in school and in our own personal lives. May God bless her and her family always, and I thank her personally for her time and love. I've been at Alliance at Meek for three years. It feels good being part of Meek. I was brought to the U.S. when I was one from Mexico. As you all may know, English is not my first language. Throughout my education, I've struggled a lot, especially in reading and writing. But today, I can say I see myself with a big future ahead of my son and I. Meek has helped me and many others, and our teachers as well. They all take the time to get to know you as a person and as a student. They also take the time to ask you questions about your education skills, and in what ways they're able to help you understand the class. Something that I love about Meek is that they work with you one-on-one if needed and make sure you understand. Most importantly, they don't give up on you, even if that means a little bit pressure. But to see that your hard work and their hard work pays off by seeing you and you seeing yourself walk across that stage and get that diploma and graduate someday. I am the promise of Oregon. Thank you and have a blessed night.
Thank you both for your testimony, and good luck to both of you, and to all of our other who testified. Those are just great stories, just great. Okay, at this time on our agenda, we'll have a discussion regarding our enrollment and transfer policy decisions. Superintendent Smith, is there anything you'd like to add before we start the discussion?
So yes, I was going to ask Judy Brenn to come up and just give you a few more pieces of information prior to the discussion.
Thank you.
And just to also express appreciation to all the people who've been coming out to the discussions with the board and to testify and give us information about how you believe this will impact your school community. So Judy?
Good evening. I am going to do my best to make this swift because I know that you still have much to discuss. But we wanted to make sure that you had a chance to have some additional information about the... One issue that you've heard a lot of discussion about over the last few meetings. I also want to let you know that we are preparing additional information that will be in your packets for discussion next week. That would include a more full set of information about the petition process and a draft of the administrative directive that we go with policy. And of course, we'll be taking good notes about whatever else you need that we hear from you tonight. But this is a particular topic that you've asked questions about and that we've heard discussion about, so we thought we'd try and dig into it for a few minutes. You have a handout that is still wet with ink probably, because it's been a busy day, and it looks something like this. And what you'll see on the slides, there are copies of it back there for the public as well. We will get it posted on our website by tomorrow morning. And what's on the slides is largely here as well. Okay, so there's a key question that's been asked. I'm going to phrase it as a question. This topic has come up a number of ways, but the key question that I hope that I've heard right, and if I haven't, you'll let me know, is will the new preference for low-income students that's being proposed result in fewer siblings of our current students being accepted to focus option schools? So I'm going to try and answer that for you, or give you enough information that you can play with as many models as you can in your head and answer the questions for yourself. Okay, to do that, there are a couple of pieces.
Actually, that's not my question.
Okay.
But if you want to go ahead.
Let's go ahead and go through this, and then we can talk about other questions, okay?
Okay, so there are some variables to be aware of. First of all, how many slots are there? And so we used an average over three years. How many applicants with low-income preference might there be in the future? And then, how many co-enrolled siblings might there be in the future? So what I've heard folks say is that while they appreciate seeing what could have happened in the past, the past isn't the future, so what could it look like in the future? So here's just a quick picture of how the future might look different conceptually than it does for people today. And starting on the left, if we thought of our focus option schools and the slots they have every year as a glass that we're filling up, the way the preferences are sorted today, it is entirely true that 100% of slots for a focus option school could go to siblings. There's 24 slots for kindergarten at Winter Haven, there could be 24 siblings, and the only students who would get into that district-wide program are siblings of kids who are already there. And it's not surprising that even though it's just listed in policy as preference, people have come to think of it as a guarantee. I think I heard that from a couple people tonight. And you can see when it's the potential to be as much as 100%, it can feel like a guarantee. It has been a preference so far, it would be a preference in the future. The difference is, if you allocate 45%, so less than half your slots, but a substantial amount, for low-income students, then that leaves you up to 55%, so it's still more than half of the program, but it's just over half of the program for siblings. And the key question is, would you have enough space then to bring all the siblings in, or are some going to be left out? Okay, so what I did this afternoon is tried to identify which schools would be likely to have sufficient applicants to qualify for the 45% set aside. Who's close to that, who's far away? And then I just said, "Just assume that everybody gets to 45%, regardless of where they've been, just assume that they get there." How many, would there still be slots left? Would there be enough in that 55% that's left to take care of all the co-enrolled siblings? Now I really, so here's the results, and you also have it on the spreadsheet in front of you. And I think this has a pointer in it, it does, so hopefully this is something that... Okay, so the first thing I looked at was how many slots are we talking about, just by numbers? So for example, here's Buckman. For the last three years, they've had 20 slots per year. If 45% of those were set aside for low-income students, that's nine. That leaves 11 for everybody else, okay? Over the last three years at Buckman, how many applicants would have qualified for those low-income seats? 11 each year. That's more than 45%. Because it's only a 45% cap, they wouldn't all be accepted. Some of those students would be moved down to the lower priority. They wouldn't get it. So I think I heard a comment earlier about what would you do when there's more low-income applicants? The preference as it's set now would say it's 45% for low-income students, not all low-income applicants, okay? So in this case, there's actually a deficit of two spaces each year to accommodate the number of low-income applicants for Buckman as it stands today. What about for siblings? Over the last three years, there's an average of 11 sibling applicants. Now unlike this portion, because the sibling part is not capped, it's really hard for me to know how many siblings are going to be in the future, and it matters. Because Buckman could have 30 low-income applicants in the future. We would still only accept 45 under that preference category. They'd still have a chance under random number, but under the preference category. However, if there were 30 co-enrolled siblings, then we would have a different challenge because there's only 55% of the space, more than half of the space for siblings, but still not enough for that many. But this is my best guess based on what I've seen over the last three years. It's the best predictor we have for how many siblings we would have in the future. 11. Those 11 do equal 55%. And in this case, there wouldn't be any siblings over the last three years who would not have been approved to Buckman. So the purpose of this chart is to walk through, school by school, and I'm not going to do that because your time is limited today. But it does allow you to look through and see where there are gaps in terms of where you already have applicant pools that are at or above 45%. It's two of the schools that we analyzed, Buckman and Creative Science, that are there now. But in the other ones, so Odyssey, here's Richmond, here's Winter Haven, and here's Devenchi. In these places, you still have a considerable amount of low-income applicants who would need to add into the pool in the coming years before you would even hit 45%. Over on this side with the siblings, you can see that at Winter Haven, over the last three years, 57%, so more than half of the applicants for the program are siblings. And there's a potential that at least one of them each year wouldn't have been approved because that's more than the 55% available to them. At other schools, I'm going to go to Richmond because I know that we've heard a considerable amount there. At 41% of the applicant pool right now, they have a buffer of about 16 slots for additional siblings before they would hit the 55%. And the 55% only matters if they actually hit 45% here. Being at 15% now, it's likely that there's a considerable amount of room both for sibling growth if such a thing were to happen, as well as low-income applicant growth before you would see conflict between the two. Is this helpful? Is this helping you see what we were seeing in our heads? And I think this is a reflection of what Sackett was hoping that we would be able to produce. Okay, quickly, so I think I've covered this. At Buckman and Winter Haven, we see co-enrolled siblings making up more than half of the slots over the last three years. And one of the things you might have noticed too is that there's a small number of slots, 20 slots, 24 slots. Since one or more siblings could be denied entry, that would only happen if there were at least 45% of the applicants who qualified as low-income. If it didn't, then there'd be more room for siblings. And it could be noted that slots could be increased at those schools. And we've worked actually with schools over time where we've seen a place where, "Oh, I've got one more sibling, could you take one more slot in the lottery?" The number of co-enrolled sibling applicants at four schools has been lower than 55%, and it leaves that cushion, in my mind, for where there's a difference between the number of siblings that we've seen and the number that they might have in the future before they would get over the edge of worrying that siblings weren't going to get in, and that's what that looks like by those schools. I noted that two of the schools now have applicant pools made up of enough siblings to qualify as low-income, so they're close to our district average. These two schools' applicant pools look closer like the district than the other schools. And there is room for that portion of the applicant pool to grow before it reaches that cap. I want to point out that if we did have cases where there's more low-income applicants than the 45%, co-enrolled siblings in that group would be accepted first. So you would have a co-enrolled low-income applicant who would receive the space first before a non-co-enrolled low-income applicant. Co-enrolled have priority in whatever set of slots we have. I think that's everything that I had, but of course, I'm available for more questions.
Okay, other questions? Tom, did you still have a question?
Yeah, which is, that's good, thank you. The, is, somebody came up to me and said that they've asked for the model that you're running, and that we haven't been able to give it to them. And I'm wondering, you know, from my perspective, this kind of public policy 101, if we're using a model to affect different parties, then we ought to be able to give that model. That model ought to be transparent, you ought to be able to replicate it. So in terms of public process and input, is that possible to do?
So everything that I've shared with you is what's online. The methodology that we followed is described in a document that's online. If there's missing information, and I certainly haven't meant to ignore anyone's questions or concerns, so I'm happy to work with that. So I'm not sure what, so these are results from the modeling that we've done so far in terms of data.
Input into it?
Input.
Data input into it. I'm just guessing, but we can have this offline, but in general, giving the model and the data out so everybody can replicate results and understand. Because you're working a little magic machine here, and you're spitting things out, and you're saying, "This is what it is, and I have full faith in you." But also, we should be able to replicate those results, others who want to do that.
Certainly. We've done our best to do that, but I'm happy to hear of any other additional information. Now, keep in mind that we have worked with raw data that includes student information, and so it's not redacted. I mean, it would be a considerable amount of effort to redact the essential parts so that students can be identified and then just make that publicly available. So in other words, the lines and lines and lines of applicant data include student-specific information, name, address, parent's name, et cetera, so...
Right, which we would not want to share.
That we wouldn't give away, right. And we could, if we took out all of that information and just had lines that didn't have that, it would take us a while to get that available, but if it seems that that's an important way for the public to be able to have visibility in our work, we could over time make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
I would just say, I actually would, I think that's not a good use of our staff time because I really want to be looking at how we're going to implement these pieces. And as we know, this is changing this policy, which is a really important step, it's just the first step, and there's a lot of challenging work ahead in terms of the petition process and the outreach and all those other pieces. So to me, I really appreciate this. This is something I was kind of noodling in my head this morning trying to understand, hearing these concerns, like how could we, what would be a way of doing that forward modeling? So I really appreciate your brain and you doing this, because it helps me a lot. And I think we'll probably need some time to digest it a little bit, but to me, this makes perfect sense, and hopefully it helps reassure folks. But again, in terms of getting into alignment with our racial educational equity policy, that's the really key piece here, that we need to get that alignment and have this low-income preference in place. And then after that, as I said, we're going to be working a lot on implementation. I'm really glad that you're going to be able to come back next week with some more detail about that, just some initial thoughts.
Others? Bobby, do you have something?
I just get frustrated sometimes because some of my colleagues speak as if their truth is the only truth in the room, and it's not. There's other truths in the room, so... And you know, I think if Tom is interested in some information, we should figure out how to get that to him. I don't see why one person has a say over another one particularly.
I don't think my truth's the only one, Bobby.
Yeah, many truths, many truths in the room. I had, you know what, I have a couple of questions that don't pertain specifically to sibling preference, so maybe I'll wait if we want to continue that discussion first.
You can go ahead and ask any questions you want.
Other ones related to the policy, okay.
Judy, you can stay there if you like, or you can sit back? You can stay there if you like, or you can sit back or whatever.
Well, I think those would be questions for you. So, I had asked two questions last week that I'm still looking for, actually, three questions last week that I'm still looking for some clarification on. The first one is in the new board policy that the superintendent gave us, the markup. There's three questions I have. One is, under policy scope, it says that the policy does not apply to charter school admissions. And the question I asked last week is whether or not we have an inclination, I hope, to go to the state to ask them when we do our lottery, whether we could ask that our charter schools follow our lottery process rather than a random open lottery process. And so, I'm still wanting an answer to that because I think if we're looking at getting a more diverse student base into our focus option schools, that should also be a, something that we're looking for in our PPS chartered, sponsored charter schools. So, I'm wanting to understand what the possibilities are of taking that approach. A second one is something that I've asked for, about for a few years, which is if we have someone who applies for a, another school outside of their neighborhood, and they're accepted, and they start in that school, and it's just a miserable fit for them, and they want to go back to their neighborhood school, we currently say that they can't do that, that they've made a year commitment. When I read admission, which is five, it says, "By area of residence, students have a right to attend the neighborhood school where they reside with their parent or supervising adult except as provided in section four." I'm trying to find where in our current policy is the rule that says that your neighborhood school wouldn't always be your default. And I'm specifically asking because if it's an absolutely terrible fit, then likely, we're going to lose the student, they're going to drop out, their family might decide to send them to private school, to homeschool, and that's not in anybody's interest either. So, I would like to point it out where in the policy that past practice is cited so that I could possibly bring forward an amendment to change that. Because my personal opinion is that your neighborhood school should always be your default. You should always have a right to go to your neighborhood school. And then, the third thing is, again, under section five for admission, under two, it talks about transfers to a different neighborhood school, a request to transfer to a different neighborhood school will be considered through the petition process. And the next question, the next statement says, "Petitions will be considered on an individual basis based on a standard set of criteria." And I'm still looking to see what that standard set of criteria would look like, and I don't know if we've even answered that yet. Maybe this would be a specific question. Do we have a standard set of criteria, or when will that be available for us to see? Because again, there was some sense that. I'm sorry, I missed that.
I missed it too. So, we're putting a packet of information together for you regarding our petition process, what's in it now, what it might look like differently next year. You'll have that in your packet this week, and we would be prepared to discuss it if you'd like next week.
That would be great, and if you could also.
So, we'll have the specific criteria.
You guys, let's, wait a turn, please.
And I'm, you know, also looking then next week for information on why we went to lottery system to start with, and if some of the concern was that it was, it felt more arbitrary or less transparent. So, I'm just wanting to make sure that when we move from a lottery to a petition process, that we have some really good, strong criteria that are transparent to folks, and people would understand why decisions are being made the way they are.
Thank you.
Director Buell? Could you clarify the question that you had about why we went to the lottery? Because that, no, but I mean, I know what you're saying, but there's two possibility answers there. One is, we went to a lottery because we made this other decision. The other one, we went to a lottery because of other types of, other types of factors, like, well, then, we don't have to send our kids to this school. I mean, you mean, why did we go to lottery after we made that? Because one of the problems that we had for twenty years, one of the reasons we shifted, of course, was because people wanted resources in their own schools, and they had more political power, and they ended up getting that for a long, long time. And the school district, that's one of the things SACIT's supposed to deal with. So, do you mean, why did we go to the whole idea of allowing kids to shift or not? Do you see where I'm kind of coming from, maybe you don't?
What I'm specifically asking is that when we went to a lottery system back in the day, what was the reason that we went to that? I presume that before that, there were some percentages of transfers here and there that were granted, that we went to a lottery instead. So, I'm just trying to understand what that's all about. I'm generally supportive of your recommendation. I have obviously some concerns around the sibling preference, but the, what I want to make sure is that when we, if we move away from the lottery, especially for neighborhood to neighborhood, or have to, well, I just want to make sure that it's an unbiased, fair, transparent process that we're going to be working with, so.
So, in our response to you, and we'll be prepared to discuss next week, and hopefully, in your packet, we'll provide some, a brief description of the rationale that accompanied this set of policy changes that you're going to be looking at, including creating a centralized lottery. What was the rationale behind it for the folks who were making the decisions at the time?
Great, thank you.
Greg?
This is, I don't think I have all the information, but you'd asked a question about legislative and charter schools, and I'm just going to share what I think I know. In maybe our first legislative committee meeting, we talked about, for the past two years, we've tried to bring a bill or had a bill supported by legislators to, for districts who have more than five percent or more of their student population in charter schools, to allow school districts to add additional requirements to those charter schools, to say, you have to not only fill a niche in the district, but you also have to help us attain what are basically our achievement compact goals. And so, I think that's what I hear you saying, is how do you match, especially if we're trying to reduce disparities and all of that piece? How do we require them? How do we engage them in that? The last two sessions, that hasn't been successful, and my understanding is we think that this time, it will be successful. So, I believe it's another bill that we're planning to do, but I think one of the challenges, right, is that a charter school is another public school, that we lose some semblance of control over, but we are hopeful that we can get the legislature to say, listen, if you're holding school districts accountable and charter schools are part of our portfolio, then we have to have the ability to engage them in a way that helps us as a district meet our goals.
And have consistency, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it just feels like if we have a racial equity policy, and then we have sponsored public charter schools, that we should at some level have some ability for them to be following the racial equity policy. And this is one of those pieces.
So, my recollection is that when we review our charter schools, we also look to see what their, what their population looks like, their demographic looks like as part of that review, although I'm not sure we have any ability to do anything about that.
Well, I think we kind of remind them always, but distinctly. Give us a little bit more of that.
Right, exactly.
Yeah. Others? Tom, did you have more?
I have some thoughts.
Now is the time. Go forth.
And I guess one question, clarifying question, which is, so, we'll have a detailed petition, the petition process in detail, the one that we're, if we pass this policy, we're going to use next week?
I guess we'll find out whether it's detailed enough. I, what I, I think we're planning on providing for you is some context for what the petition process is now, what the criteria is, who's making decisions, how it works now, and then the modifications that we potentially see coming forward. If you're looking for something else, it would be helpful to hear that now.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess, yes. I mean, I, this is kind of segueing into my own, my own thinking, which is, we're, we're just wanted to share everybody.
Absolutely. Go for it.
So, I mean, so I mean, I look at this whole, on what we're doing, and it's, to me, it's a, we're in a paradigm where we're pitting choice, whether it's sibling preference, you know, or neighborhood schools, against, versus equity. And I think the superintendent's recommendations, and SACIT's, all their great work within that paradigm have come up with some, I don't think you could ask for better recommendations in that paradigm, with the exception of the sibling preference. So, and in many ways, I'm very, very, very excited, and in all ways, I'm excited about what it takes for this community to make sure that every neighborhood school is powerfully great and providing and delivering the services. And that's what I think we all want. I do get frustrated sometimes that all this, that we spend a lot of time on things other than what it takes to make schools great. And to me, that's really the focus where, it's why I ran for this board. I didn't run for all these other, this other stuff that seemed to come with it. But I'm willing to plow through. So, but the question that comes back to me is, can we, is there a paradigm where choice and equity are not opposed to each other, but actually are catalytic to each other? And so, that's kind of what I've been, that's where I've been mulling. And we'd like to have discussions with anybody who wants to discuss it. And I don't, I don't know the answer, but that's where, that's the paradigm I would prefer to live in than a zero, which I think is a zero-sum paradigm where we have to pit siblings against equity. I just don't think that has to happen, and it's just not something that we can do. So, so this gets back to the choice aspect of it, which is, so this recommendation, the choice now is going from the lottery, in terms of the neighborhood, the neighborhood school, to the petition process. And really understanding that, and I know some of the SACIT members, probably all of them, some are here today, have very, have expressed concerns about this process. So, I'm not really excited about saying yes to something without knowing exactly what that looks like, how it's going to be implemented, and making sure that it, that it's, that it has integrity. So, to answer your question, Judy and Carol, the, and then I think about the enrollment process. So, you know, so here's another paradigm in terms of choice and equity and blowing the paradigm that they have to be opposed to each other. What if we lifted the, tomorrow lifted the cap on Benson, gave more people choices, and increased the economic opportunities to folks across the city? Benson is our number one, has the best graduation rate, has the best graduation rate among the underserved folks. So, these are just the things that this discussion about enrollment and transfer, I've just been thinking about. And so, it's not, for me, it's not a slam dunk. Clearly, SACIT took eighteen months, I'm going to not hopefully take eighteen months.
We're not giving you.
Yeah, okay, I know, particularly, yeah. Yeah. My last question, the last thought, which is for you, Carol, is, is, I also wonder about, we have this boundary review process, and this issue is so linked to that, but we're out of, we're out of step with it. And so, I would like to hear your thought process of saying, okay, this now, and we're going to, you know, redo our rules, then, we're going to tell you where. But as opposed to a process, the district review process, which seems to actually be rooted in really, really good, on paper, really good public process and hugely extremely bold goals on how to make that work, whether we ought to just, we'd be better off to do it all together? And I know there'd be a lot of pushback to that, but I would, I wanted to hear your thinking on that.
Of the why, of why do this?
Why are we sequencing as opposed to actually doing everything together?
Well, and we've, I think, as we approached this back when the board talked about these two processes, we described them as being very connected.
Yeah.
And we enlisted SACIT, saying, we want you as part of both. I think the policy changes and doing those first, particularly if part of what you do is retain more of the students in a catchment area, will influence then what are the looks we're doing, at what boundaries we move. So, like, it's all connected, it's all going to be a dynamic process, and it's part of why we want the same group of people in both. But we collectively said, let's tackle the policy, the enrollment transfer policy first before we start looking at boundaries.
But then it.
It'll be, I know, it'll.
Yeah, but we're going to be, we would, under this, we would implement it first before.
And we'll implement.
Even though they're connected.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. So, I'm still chewing on that.
But I think what I, what I thought I heard you say is that we're going to make changes to one, and we'll have one run at least of what impact that has. And I think I expressed, I don't remember if it was last night's town hall or at some point, a question about, right, being aware of what schools are going to then become overcrowded. I can think of one very close to me that all of a sudden, if they capture all their neighborhood schools, they're not going to have room in it, which then will inform.
Boundary.
The boundary discussion. But if you do them both simultaneously, it's kind of like taking a guess at both, and then having to redo it shortly thereafter, where at least if you have one land first, you have some trends to look at, and then you can lead it to inform. That's my thinking, I guess.
And actually, there are, so we've got the enrollment transfer policies. We also are setting in motion the review of all of the focus options, which includes looking at citing of them. We're also looking at the district-wide boundary. I mean, all of these connect to one another. And even when you're putting Benson in the mix, like, part of this is about health of individual schools and looking at the ecology of the whole system. And it's all of these levers, and I think the policy changes we're talking about go into effect next year for next year's kids, we'll start to see the impact, but it's not going to be a wholesale, all of a sudden, everything shuffles. It's going to be, we're going to start to understand what this impact is. But yeah, we're looking at how are we getting at health of the whole system. And you could do this with any part of it. Why were we doing boundaries first, when we're going to change policies that then end up shifting what kids are staying in their neighborhood schools? I mean, you could say.
Or you could do it together.
Any one of these, you start in any place, and you're going to say, why didn't we do the, you know, why didn't we start in the other place?
Or you could do them together.
Which is, which is what we're doing. I mean, I think that's exactly what we're doing, is trying to, yes. I get why you're wrestling with it, Tom.
Yeah.
Ruth, so I just wanted to offer a comment, just offering my perspective, that I don't see this as choice and equity being put in opposition. I see this as using an equity lens for our choice system. And that's, to me, a crucial difference. So, I just have a different point of view on that.
And actually, I'm going to say similar when you, like, I think part of the whole tension of this is the desire in this community to have strong neighborhood schools and have some element of choice, and us figuring out how we sustain all of that in a healthy fashion. And that's what we've been looking at, is what's the amount of, like, what's the amount of each we can have and have them all be healthy?
Yeah, but when, and I agree, and so, I'm, so.
So, I don't see them pitted either. I think that's exactly what you're trying to do.
When you say, you know, certainly from my viewpoint on the sibling preference, and I can talk about the other, the neighborhood, neighborhood schools as well, but from sibling preference, if we can't keep families together. schools as well, but from sibling preference, if we can't keep families together and increase opportunities and give educational access to everybody, then we also resign from the board and get another job. We can do both. And so it is pitting, it's pitting one against the other. I don't think that, that that is necessary. And I offer Benson High School, you know, as exhibit A for an ability to increase our opportunities using the equity lens, but we're not, we're capping it. So, you know, and if, if, so it's just, it's a, you know, we, we're looking at every little school as opposed to the system. So yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't buy it. And for me, for me, it is, it's pitting, and I'm not gonna, I will not vote for that.
Craig?
I appreciate you using Benson as exhibit A, because I think there are communities in this district who would actually use Benson as exhibit A to prove that by focusing just on Benson, or allowing neighborhood to neighborhood, or not paying attention to focus option and the choices that we make in policy about it, was exactly decimating their neighborhood school. It was the thing that was keeping from robust or healthy programming in each of their schools. So I appreciate what you're saying, I hear what you're saying, but I think Benson can be used both ways, both as an example of how exciting and how well we can do equity, and not, not at the expense of lowering a standard, for example, as often people worry. But it also, it does become an example of the flight that happens, sometimes just through reputation of neighborhood schools, so.
Can I just add, Bobby? What, what killed our neighborhood schools was not Benson, it was No Child Left Behind.
Right.
And it was, it was the federal government forcing us to label schools as failing, and to move teachers out and to move principals out. It was not Benson versus neighborhood schools. It was the federal government and the flawed No Child Left Behind Act.
And they're still doing it.
Yep.
Ruth?
So, yeah, I appreciate the discussion, and I think, I guess, if I still, from my perspective, this superintendent's recommendations don't, do have both, and it's not pitting. Because to me, especially given Judy's additional analysis here, I feel like we are, we're using the equity lens, applying it to our, to our policy and to our procedures, and it's also clearly from this analysis maintaining sibling preference. So I think it does do both, and I'm supportive.
Steve, we haven't heard very much from you. Do you have anything?
I have a bunch of things.
Go ahead.
First of all, I'm very disappointed in our public process around this. I thought the meeting last night at Jefferson High School was one of the best I've seen in years, and the fact that we're not going to have a couple more of those meetings, and we're just going to have what we had tonight, which you might as well send me an email, has come up here and talked. I mean, you have a little bit of personality maybe, but I don't learn anything new unless I'm able to ask questions in dialogue, or we're able to talk about that. So I, I'm objecting to the public process, first of all. And it wouldn't slow us down, we could do it tomorrow and the next night. One quick question that is on kind of almost a little different topic, Ms. Brennan, would you go over for me and for people in the audience, what are the rules for the dual-language immersion? How you determine who gets into those? What's the steps? So pick up, someplace like Beach has a, has a Spanish immersion. What's the steps that gets in if they're overcrowded? How do we decide? There is a lottery, correct?
Yes. So dual-language immersion programs, most of them have what we would call four different sets of slots, slots for students to live in the neighborhood, and those are divided by those students who speak the target language and those whose primary language is English. So in the case of Beach, you'd have Beach neighborhood English speakers, Beach neighborhood Spanish speakers. There are also slots, then, for students who live in other areas. For Beach, that includes priority for other students who live in the Jefferson cluster or the Roosevelt cluster. And again, those slots are divided by whether students are native Spanish speakers or English speakers. So like with any other choice, you would apply in the lottery. You also attend a meeting at the school, and at that time, indicate your child's language, so that, so that's where the language is captured. And then your child's name is run through the lottery. If you are a co-enrolled sibling of a current student in the program, your name goes to the top of whatever bucket your child fits in. So if your child is a native English speaker but a co-enrolled sibling, they would go to the top, up with other co-enrolled siblings, of the native neighborhood speakers group. So four different groups, slots allocated based on proportions that are set by the schools. Many of them are 50-50 neighborhood, 50-50 language. So there's some work to be done to get the numbers just right. We'd run the lottery, check the results, and send that information out to families.
Do we ever have siblings in those schools that don't get enrolled? There's too many siblings that fill up the spots?
It can happen.
No, do we, has it, did it happen this last year?
It has happened.
This last year, did it happen?
Did it happen this last year? Thank you for the question.
You're welcome.
I, not for any students who are in the neighborhood or the priority zone, although we did have, I think, two students who weren't identified as priority, and when we became aware of that, we fixed that problem after the lottery ran. So technically, the answer was yes. It was because of a technical mistake. Once we learned of the mistake, we were able to write it.
So all the siblings, basically, throughout all, how many immersion programs do we have?
So I want to clarify, there are some siblings in immersion programs, Spanish immersion programs, who don't live in the region, and so they have a lower priority than those that do. And we did have siblings who were not approved into Ainsworth, I believe, last year, because they are siblings of students-
Is it Ainsworth, though?
Ainsworth, Spanish immersion.
It's not dual, is it the same as Richmond?
It's a Spanish immersion program. They have a set aside of 15% for native Spanish speakers. They have a set aside for neighborhood students, and they have priority for students who live in the Wilson or Lincoln clusters. Co-enrolled siblings of students who live in other clusters did not get in last year.
So Richmond, isn't Richmond and Ainsworth similar?
In terms of the proportion of native speakers, they are similar.
But are there different rules for Ainsworth than for Richmond?
The rules, the difference is Richmond doesn't have any kind of regional factors. It has, you know, one pool for all students regardless of where they live. At Ainsworth and other immersion programs, any other program that's co-located in a neighborhood school, they have some set asides by, by area, by geographic area. Could be the neighborhood, it could be the high school clusters around that area.
Are there any other immersion programs that aren't co-located? That are all total immersions?
The only one that's not co-located, the only all immersion school in the district is Richmond.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Did you have more? Anything else?
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Some other.
Tell me you're from somebody else.
Are we looking at, are we, we're determining what rules to have for the, if you wanna call them hardship transfers, what do we call them?
Petitions.
Petition transfers, thank you. Some places, they call them the hardship transfers. Have we looked at, like, Evergreen and Vancouver and Eugene and Corvallis and Tillamook? What rules they have for changes? Have we looked at that? Do we have like a whole list, like 30 or 40 other areas where we're looking at what they do, and we're trying to line up ours with successful ones? And have we talked to them about what the problems they've had, they have, for instance? Because I know when I was, just, I hate to always bring up my own personal experiences, but when I was teaching up at Evergreen, they had seven, seven middle schools, and you went to the middle school in your area, that was it, unless, da-da-da-da-da-da-da, and that was, and that was okay someplace. Have we looked at all those? Do we have lists of those that we've gathered up and stuff?
So as, as the director of the Enrollment and Transfer Center, I can tell you that we have, I would say sporadically, interacted with staff from other districts. The most recent interaction that I had personally was with Beaverton, looking at their process and what, what constitutes hardship, how those decisions are made, at what level, at what time of year, and the like. Systematically, I would say no, but I would also say that the petition process wasn't a factor that SACET in particular raised as problematic. So they weren't auditing the results of the petition process and saying, we, you know, there are problems and flaws there now. So we weren't, aren't, at this point, my thinking about what we'll do next is not based on, on something that, that needs to rectify problems. It's more in line with, one, making sure that we're aligned with our racial, educational, equity policy, and two, being prepared to, for more volume, because the thinking is, if, if you don't have an opportunity through a lottery, there are still people who would be interested in transferring, and we want to make sure that we're managing additional volume well and following the guidelines from within PPS. Could we work with other districts in talking through that? Absolutely.
I'm just talking about if they have written policy, we're going to have written policy concerning that.
So I pulled up written policy from Salem and Beaverton most recently, worked pretty closely with David Douglas and other nearby districts, just in general, to understand theirs. Certainly, a lot of pieces of that through the inner district, the changes that we've had to make through our inner districts, talking with other districts about what constitutes a hardship there and not here. But I would say that's within the guise of the general assignments that I have the pleasure of doing for Portland Public Schools, just directing the office, and not necessarily specific to what's coming before you for policy change.
Okay, I have a statement.
Tom, do you have something?
Just a quick follow-up question.
Sure.
So Judy, would you sit down with these folks to go over your model with them? Because I specifically was asked, but they don't understand.
Yeah, and as soon as, as soon as I can, I'll be right in the back, and I'll get-
This, this guy right there, that guy.
Hi.
Yeah.
We'll talk.
The numbers guy.
Okay.
Okay, well, you're an analyst.
You got it.
I heard you, see? I heard you.
You were listening.
I was.
Thank you.
We do. Okay, so we have, we're already about a half an hour over our time, so Director Buell, go ahead, and we could just kind of move along.
I just have a statement.
Yep.
This statement has, it isn't really about the specific SACET thing, it's about if we're going to accept the SACET recommendations, what we need to do in order to go forward as a school district.
I take it it's all germane to the topic of, in general, right now?
It's all germane, it's all germane to the topic.
Great.
I'm leaning toward voting for the SACET recommendations with a couple reservations, which would be no surprise to people who were aware of my previous work as a school board member, any of my campaign information, and my work in past years with a now archived blog, PPS Equity. I am pleased that the superintendent has brought forth these recommendations. But if neighborhood schools with no neighborhood to neighborhood transfers are to become the system by which we populate our schools, similar to most other school districts, then we can no longer continue with business as usual, either here on the school board or in our central office administration. If there is no safety valve for parents in a school which is struggling, then we need to change the way we're looking at our district's disjointed educational philosophy. A principal said to me recently that he wished the central office would realize that their job is to support the schools, not the school's job to support them. After a year and a half on the school board, this is the lesson that I have learned. We need to support the schools in a manner which makes them better, not which meets the needs of the people in this building, including ourselves. We can no longer be compliance-oriented. We must become school-oriented. We can no longer afford to spend $8 million outside of our budget of possible 88 FTE, and put only six FTE in our schools, and spend the rest on process and other assorted programs. We can no longer spend $14 million on general education consultants, when this could be more than 100 extra teachers in our buildings. We can no longer afford to dally when a community is upset about their school and the way it is running, hoping things will work out. We will need decisive action based on what is actually happening there, not some corporate education dream of what we, what could happen if we only implemented their expensive programs. We can no longer afford to waffle on third grade reading, and must get the librarians and reading specialists into the schools to meet the needs, instead of relying on professional development, scripted lesson plans, and waiting for the promised miracle of the Common Core and the S-PAC, a miracle which will never arrive. We must build a solid educational foundation in our elementary schools and middle grade configurations, upon which we can then scaffold the necessary people who can actually meet children's needs. This foundation needs to have a whole-child engaging component to it, which gives our children things at school to look forward to and reasons to be there outside of the esoteric idea of getting a good education. We need to make these things our priorities, so people will be willing to partner with us in making their neighborhood school work. Let me tell you a story. When Matt Profit, the highly respected PPS superintendent, was working late one evening here in this building, he received an irate call from a parent, just happened to pick up the phone. Her child had left his textbook at school and couldn't do his lesson. She was mad at the school. It hadn't made her son, it hadn't made sure her son had left with his textbook. What was his response, Profit's? He went to the school, got the textbook, which her son needed, and delivered it to her late at night. Now, some of you sitting in this audience might think this is nuts, but it is the type of specific dedication to the education taking place in our schools which we need. My colleague, Tom Kurler, often talks about wanting our schools to be the best there are. We can only do this under the SACET recommendations if we focus on our schools, not ourselves. If you can't do that, I'm speaking to my fellow board members, then don't make or support these recommendations. They will do more harm than good. Thank you.
Others? Okay, so I just had a couple of things, Judy. First of all, I think I just want to say that there's only one reason I'm on the school board, and that's because I care about children. And the decisions that I make on the school board, I make because I think about everything that the people write to me, when you come here and you testify. I think about all those things. I think about my own kids, I think about my own experiences, we all do. And out of those, we try and make the best decisions we possibly can for all of our students here at Portland Public Schools. I think all of us here on this board are dedicated to your students, to our students, and to making sure that we do the best we possibly can. So with regard to enrollment and transfer, I'm happy to hear that you said that you're gonna provide us with the information about the petition, because that's at the top of my list. I'm really concerned about the objective-subjectiveness of that. With Bobby, I'm very concerned about making sure that it's unbiased, fair, transparent, how we do that. And I appreciate your comment, but we haven't had complaints about those over the last few years, but I would like to make sure that that continues, and I think that that's a, that's a real danger when, when we, if, if and when we do away with the lottery, because we will have a higher volume and it will be harder for us. And the implementation, which has not been our strong suit in many cases, others it has been, but the implementation will be what makes a difference on this. So I'm very interested in seeing what you have. The other thing that I'm interested in, and nobody else has talked about this tonight, is, and it, and it's one of the things that concerns me about the whole process that we've been going through, and that is, how are we actually gonna get more people who are free and reduced lunch, low-income people, to apply? I mean, that's really the issue. We can change all the preferences and do all that, but if they don't apply, it's gonna be for naught. So I would also like to see what the marketing is gonna look like before we vote on this. How are we going to market these schools to our public? And then the other thing is, I had a little bit of discussion today with someone about this whole process, and we were talking about why aren't people applying, or how do we get people to apply? He said, well, once you get them to apply, then there's another, there's another barrier there. And there are several barriers that we know about. But one of those barriers is, is your school welcoming to somebody who's culturally different from what the school currently looks like? And so this again goes to implementation. What are we gonna do to make sure that our schools are welcoming to those students that we're trying to make sure are going there? Because we know right now, there's a low number of free and reduced lunch, a low number of children of color in those schools. So what are we gonna do to make sure that? So what are we going to do to make sure that if and when they come, they're going to feel welcome, they're going to feel like they're a part of the school, they're going to be at the PTA, they're going to be volunteering in the classrooms? This is, diversity of our current population or demographic is one of the strong suits of Portland Public Schools. We just haven't quite learned how to use it, and I think we need to work harder at that. I think we've come a long way in the last three, five years, but I think we have a long way to come to embrace the diversity of our demographic and to welcome people into our schools, make sure they feel like they're their schools as well. So that's another implementation thing that I'm very concerned about. And then finally, I think that we need to make sure that we include within all of this, when we get ready to do the resolutions, a check and balance on it. Have we actually included something within our resolution that requires us to come back each year and hear what's happening?
Yes.
So that we can make adjustments, because this is going to be new, and we are going to want to see what's happening, and we are going to want to make adjustments if we need to. So those are the things that I'm most concerned about and that I'm thinking about, and I haven't made up my mind yet how I'm voting on any of this. So I continue to welcome emails from people. I personally enjoy hearing your comments face-to-face. I also enjoy the town hall, so I couldn't be there last night, I had to work, darn. That other job gets in the way all the time, but that's really everything I have. So thank you very much for being here tonight with us.
Thanks, Judy.
Okay, so we move on.
Good point. Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is the always exciting Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. We are so glad you guys are here tonight. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this item?
It's so exciting that...
And I'll tell you what, for those of you who wonder what we do, this is the Comprehensive Annual Report that you also could read if you run for the school board.
It's available online, they don't have to...
It's actually really great. The audience, people who are leaving right now, but those people on...
I'm not offended by English.
No, it's actually very, very interesting. I think the first, especially the first few pages where it talks about the history of the district and our recent financials, it's really quite fascinating to see what we do. So I encourage everybody to go ahead and take a look at it. So, go ahead, sorry.
Wait, and I'm going to introduce Cherie Lewis, who is our Senior Director of Accounting and Payroll, to present the report. And I'm also going to say, we received national recognition for this, for the, I think we're the longest-standing district in the country in terms of recognition for our annual financial report, so Cherie Lewis.
The United States and...
And Canada.
Jennifer Black.
Thank you, General. I'm bored. Superintendent in the audience, I'm sorry I cleared the room for you, but it is, to me, it's the most exciting thing in the day, I'm sorry. I'd like to introduce two members of the team that helped put this together, Sheronne Sloan and David Schick. They help us put this together. So thank you very much. So what's in your packet in that wonderful 366 pages? About 250 of it is the light reading that you just talked about. Basically, in there, as the superintendent said, I want to thank everybody in the district because this does not happen in itself. It takes everybody in the district from the schools, we rely heavily on the schools. I thank the Communications Department, who put together the covers and the inserts that have the wonderful pictures that tell us what we achieved during the year, anywhere from the graduation rates with the person cheering on the front page, from the person paying with robotics. So thank you very much for that, it was very enlightening. And I apologize if I say CAFER, it actually means Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And the other report that's in your packet is called the Single Audit Report, which is basically a report that says what we have in the federal money and basically how much we spent in any one given year. So I know it's enlightening reading, so. Right now, we want to present to you that this, we have no findings in this year, which is, there are no internal control findings, which is how we run our processes and procedures for internal controls, and there are no internal control or findings on any of the federal money, which is roughly 50-some to 60-some million dollars. So those were major things, and as the superintendent said, we in the district have been receiving this award for 34, this should be the 35th year consecutive year that the district has received this award, and we have been in, or participated in it, 43 years, the longest district in the United States and Canada. So it's a wonderful thing. And as you read the lightning fund documents, I will just say, the district is in good standing. We have 20 funds in the district, and all of them are in good standing. We got basically what we call an unmodified opinion, which basically, we are in great standing. If you want to read the, as we all go through college and hope there's the Cliff Notes, the Cliff Note version of what you're reading is on page four to 13. So if you want to take the other 200-plus pages and reduce them down to about 11 pages of excitement, that's page four through 13. I just think it's exciting, I'm sorry. So I get excited about this stuff. So if you wanted to, at this point, what we'll have, and this will be the first reading, the auditors will come back on December 9th, the following Tuesday. They will present the financial statements, and at that time, we will ask you to approve the financial statements in its totality, but as the state requires us, we have the auditors present the financial statements and we do the initial draft. Does anybody have any questions?
I wanted to compliment you on something, which is a silly little thing, but I was looking at one word in your document called nadir.
Looked at that, too.
And I honestly thought it was a typo, and I was going to say, what the hell is it? So it was on page 2I, so, but I'm impressed, because I looked it up.
We'll be back from it.
After more than a decade of steady decline, beginning in 1996, 97, Portland Public Schools has seen increasing enrollment counts for the last six years since a nadir in October 2008.
I can't take that accomplishment. I would give that to David Wine, who put that there. So I would love to take the accomplishment for that wonderful word, but I will pass it on to David.
Well, you may be looking up, so a nadir is the lowest point in the fortunes of a person or organization.
Nice.
Nice, okay, even more helpful. Anyway, write that down. I guess just showing that I did, in fact, read at least the pages that you indicated we should definitely read.
Those are the great pages. So although I made kind of light of this, I do say that, you know, it's one of our major responsibilities, the finances of the district, and do appreciate you bringing this to us, and I'll look forward to hearing from the auditor next week, so.
He may not be as fun as I am, I'm sorry.
They're always good. Greg?
I just wanted to say something I appreciated, is I know that last time we were here, there was a question about the procurement card, and I was glad to see the steps we had taken have produced, and I appreciate the extra effort that we went through by pulling and auditing all the full year's worth. I just appreciate that extra due diligence, and I was glad to see the controls in place.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Cherie.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Wait a minute, did you have a comment?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for this. Also, thank you to Mr. Wine for answering my questions that I would have asked you, so I saved you some answers there.
I appreciate that.
He gave me good answers, I thought. One of the complaints that we often get around budget time is that our budget is incomprehensible, and one of the answers we come up with is that it's incomprehensible because the state requires us to report the budget in a certain way. But you've summarized this audit. Could we use the same careful system close to that to summarize the budget and come out with a summarized budget that would allow people to actually read it, who are somebody off the street who wants to understand the budget? Could we do that, do you think?
In response to that, the answer to that question, I would love to take the credit for it, but it's governmental accounting standards that, on page three through 14, it's the management discussion and analysis is the requirement of the federal and state government that requires us to put that in there in very specific detail between every fund, budget comparison, worth of capital. Those are guidelines. 99.5% of what you see are very restrictive guidelines in what you see. So our latitude is very small in what you're looking at. The cover page, the back of the cover page, the index, everything else, pretty much is very restrictive and very, you have to put it in a certain strategic order. So that the Cliff Note version is by guidelines of governmental accounting standards, we are required to do that. The same kind of concept can be taken for the budget, and we kind of do that, but we put a little bit more different approach to it, but it can, in the same concept. I'd love to take the credit for it, sir, but that's not mine, it's the federal government we have to follow.
We could do a regular budget that we're supposed to do under the law, and then we could do a summary budget that somebody on the street could understand.
Yes, we could.
Would that be a possibility?
And that's something that I believe, as Superintendent Youssef and David and I are looking at, a better way for presenting it for everybody as a citizen to understand.
Thank you very much.
I would suggest that perhaps an audit format is not the sort of common man or woman's perspective on readable. So you might, I think what we're looking, I mean, I've been on boards for, you know, only 15 years or so, and each year, there are colleagues of mine that struggle with the format of federal regulations, and it's not, it's not common speech. And I think in order to create accessibility for our, for records like this, and certainly records like our budget, there's probably some other venues to pursue, but that's just my opinion.
There's a discussion with Superintendent Youssef and David and I, is taking components of this, along with a budget, and creating a version that is not structured by federal or state guidelines, and make it more transparent for all members of the board and the audience to read.
Excellent. We like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is our discussion about multiple pathways. Superintendent Smith?
Yes.
Here we go, here comes Karina.
Karina Wolf, who is our Senior Director of Multiple Pathways to Graduation, is going to present this report. And I'm just going to remind you, this is part of, we began a series of presentations to the board, cluster by cluster, where you got to hear from all of the schools in a given cluster and got perspective. This is the presentation that our Multiple Pathways to Graduation programs have put together for us, led by Karina, and they're totally excited to present this part of our organization to you.
Well, the information that you provided to us was wonderful, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is this, is the report that, 2013, is there something refreshed?
So, good evening, Superintendent Smith, School Board Directors. I think what you're referring to, Director Knowles, is a segmentation analysis, which was on, included in the packet and is on the website. And it is data taken in 2011, '12, that was then analyzed in '12, '13, and published in December of '13. So we're...
So it's all the way, the data is all the way back from 2011?
Right.
Wow.
Yeah.
So when do we refresh that?
It's, so we are looking at refreshing it on last year's data for currently.
Great.
It's kind of in the queue to be done again.
Great, thanks, sorry. Didn't mean to jump on you there, right before we got going.
Yeah, no, it's great. So I...
So I suppose what was just handed out is different than what we got in our packets? Is there a reason that we got any of it?
It's the same, it should be the same.
Okay.
And I actually have copies here in the boardroom as well.
No, we've got it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, the purpose of tonight's presentation is to give an understanding of the depth and the breadth of the schools and programs that Multiple Pathways to Graduation serves to ensure that all of our students succeed. And I'd like to say that I have a presentation, that I'm going to go through my presentation, and then I also have in the audience tonight are the Multiple Pathways leaders and principals. And so during the question and answer part, I would welcome their voices as well, if there are particular questions. So I just want to acknowledge and honor that they're here as well.
You might go ahead and let them introduce themselves, that'd be great.
Okay.
If they're, if they're right, are they here?
They are, and we were told we had a, do we have a loose mic?
Oh, there were a couple up here, but they're not going to...
They can just stand up and say who they are and where their principal, we can hear, it's okay. Don't be shy.
Diane Bertray Hernandez, Assistant Director of Learning and Credit Options. Hold on one second.
Go ahead.
I'm Diane Bertray Hernandez, I'm the Assistant Director of Learning and Credit Options.
Okay. Christine?
I'm Kristen Miles, and I'm the Program Director of Charter Schools.
I'm Carla Gay, I'm the Vice Principal for Reconnection Center.
I'm Elise Huggins, I'm the Education Manager at Portland Youth Builders.
I'm Julie Prindall, and I'm the Senior Manager of Social Work Services for Multiple Pathways.
Hi, I'm Serene Bertram, and I'm the Assistant Principal with the Portland Dart School.
Hi, my name is Mark Van Homsen, I'm the Principal for the Portland Dart School.
Hello, Lorna Fast Buffalo Horse, Principal of Alliance High School.
Hello, Drake Sheldon, Vice Principal of Alliance High School.
Hello, I'm Cheryl James, Program Director for Teen Parent Services.
Great.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you very much.
You bet. And we're missing, Joseline Bagai-Selter is at the COSA Law Conference, so she could not be here today. So I have a lot of information to go over, and I just want to also just share with folks that we are coming back in a charter presentation in January, with, specifically around charter school issues, and then in the spring, we're also coming back with virtual scholars around technology issues, so I just wanted to share that information. What we'd like to do to start, as you saw earlier, is our students tell the story best, and so we have a video right now of some of our students.
The students that were here earlier were wonderful. Yes, they were.
You know, I was really falling behind, you know, and freshman year I did good, and in 10th grade I started falling behind, and I just really needed a redirection.
But as I got older, I started to realize how important school was.
Well, the year and a half that I have been here, I've like, I've made through a lot of progress that I didn't think I was going to do. I thought I wanted to get my G and D stuff, but, you know, I learned that I could actually, you know, get it all done.
It's a good fit for me, because it allows me to go at my own pace, you know what I mean? So let's say I don't get something, then, like I said earlier, it's more like the teacher's there to help you.
I mean, it's really important, because, you know, you always need somebody to help push you, you know, the extra mile.
If I don't get that degree or equivalent, then I'm not really, you know, I'll probably be at McDonald's.
You want to have a good job, you don't want to be working at McDonald's for the rest of your life, and a lot of good jobs they require you, you have to have a diploma.
But I could be on track to graduating this year. That's my goal.
I slacked off dang. Now I need to go here to make sure I can still graduate.
I'm hoping in 10 years, I'll be a veterinarian.
In 10 years, I want to be able to look back on these days and say, thank God for Alliance, because if they weren't there, then what would I be doing?
So our commitment is to provide multiple pathways to academic achievement where all students are welcomed, wanted, and worthy. And that's really the overview of multiple pathways, and we do that through a series of schools and programs that provide wraparound support on a continuum from prevention, intervention, and reengage... on a continuum from prevention, intervention, and re-engagement. And so the, the programs that we have under Multiple Pathways are many. All of the contracted schools are under Multiple Pathways to Graduation. So that includes the charter schools as well as the alternative schools, the community-based organizations, which we refer to as CBOs. So in the prevention through support, we have, and when we talk about prevention, intervention, and re-engagement, our, our job is really to prevent high school dropout and to promote student achievement. So what we do is we provide specific support to, to keep students engaged and enrolled in a variety of ways. So when you look at charter schools, charter schools offer an opportunity for innovation and, and learning models that are brought to our district. And we look at learning and credit options, we have Portland Evening Scholars, Summer Scholars, Virtual Scholars. And under Virtual Scholars, we also have credit by exam. And those are really our district-wide credit recovery programs and I'll talk more about them in a minute. We also have Teen Parent Services and so we meet our teen parents where they are. You heard from one of our wonderful teen moms tonight. And so we have teen parents, as you can imagine, all over the continuum with regard to prevention, intervention, and re-engagement. With regard to intervention, when, when students are needing an alternative school placement, we have Alliance, our in-district alternative school, which is on two, located on two campuses, as well as our contracted community-based programs. We have our day and residential treatment schools or our Dart schools. And those are schools where students are placed by either OYA, the Oregon Youth Authority, or by DHS. And so when they're placed in facilities that are within Portland Public Schools boundaries, we provide the education services for those students. We also have our Multiple Pathways Social Work Services and you just met Julie and we'll talk about that as well. And then with, with regard to re-engagement, for our students who have left, been unenrolled or left their education, we have the Reconnection Center and we have Reconnection Services. So this is the broad umbrella that is Multiple Pathways to Graduation. And what I'd like to do is share a little bit about each of the, each of the programs. With regard to the segmentation analysis that Director Knowles, you mentioned earlier, this is one of the graphics from the segmentation analysis, that when we looked at our high school system, we looked at who's on track for graduation and who's off track. And of the students who are off track, how significantly are they off track? And so the terms, you can see from this graphic, that the vast majority of our students are being served very well. They're being served very well in their comprehensive, comprehensive or focus high school. What you see in the yellow bars is the students who are off track to varying degrees. And the terms are national terms and I'm going to share with you the definitions. So if they're old, they're old seventeen and older, so between seventeen and twenty-one. If they're young, they're sixteen and under. If they're termed as near, they're within six credits of being back on track. And if they're termed as far, they're more than six credits behind with their cohort, peer of their cohorts. And so when we looked at, as a system, and those are, again, those are national terms. When we looked at as a district, we found that we have a population which is off track, but they're young and near, so they're not that far off track. We also have a portion of our students who are older, so they're seventeen and above, but they're not, they're within one year of being back on track. We have a segment of our students who are older and more than a year away from being on track. And we have a segment of our population who are young and more than a year off track.
Quick question.
Sure.
Two things, you might already have this, never mind, you might already have an answer.
Okay. I'm, I'm hoping that's the case.
Okay.
So our focus in Multiple Pathways is to really look at particularly those top two tiers, but to look at our off-track students. So all three of the segments of that triangle and most particularly the two, the top two, the middle and top triangle. And so when we look at this, again, this is from the segmentation analysis. When we look at this, we look at what's the level of service intensity that's needed to wrap around specific segments of our high school population. And so we look at the top tier are the six hundred and two in 2012-11, the six hundred and two high school dropouts. In our middle tier, we had eight hundred and fifty-six who were significantly or more than six credits off track. And in our bottom tier, we had twenty-nine hundred and thirty-two students who were slightly off track. They were within one year of being back on track with their cohort. So that is that. So that's really our focus, is how do we really look at who our students are and how do we wrap around them to stay, to stay, stay enrolled and be successful? Within our alternative schools, with our alternative school report card, we, this is the student demographics that we have. So within, for students who need an alternative school placement in our alter, in our, in our alternative education programs, the top line that you see is those served by Alliance and CBOs and the bottom is the PPS high school system in total. So we served in two thousand, and this is the pilot, I should say, from, from eleven-twelve. So in eleven-twelve, we served twenty-six hundred and twenty-eight students. And this are, these are the demographics. So fifty-six point four of them were students of color as compared to forty-five point nine percent of the general high school population. Fifty-six percent of our students in alternative education were male, same age range thirteen to twenty-one. Where the PPS high school population is one point seven percent are pregnant and parenting students, we serve seven point three percent. Yeah, we have greater special education percentages of students. Where the general high school population is sixteen point six, we have, served twenty-two percent of our students are special education. So we have a higher rate than the district average. And then the last two, which are both significant, is our high school population has a homeless population of three point five and we're at almost ten percent of our students are homeless students. And then lastly, our English language learners, five percent as a district, and then alternative education, we're at six point five. And again, this was from, this was from the 2013 pilot and we'll share more about that. What that says, if you take that a little bit further, is when we looked at the specific students' histories, the average number of schools they went to before they enrolled in an alternative school was four. The average number of weeks-
Does that, does that mean, that doesn't mean an elementary school, middle school, high school, that means?
Right. Four high, four high schools.
Four high schools? Great, thank you.
So the average number of weeks out of a PPS school was twelve weeks. So while we have some students that are only out a week or they're unenrolled and they're out a week and they transition quickly, we have many students who are, it's, it's much longer because the average turns out to be three months. So we certainly have students who have been out a year or been out six, six months, a significant period chunk of time. The average age of entry into our, into our alternative school system is seventeen point three. And then the average number of credits by grade level when students come into alternative school is the following. So in ninth grade, they come in with one credit. At, in tenth grade, they come in with four instead of six. In eleventh grade, they typically come in with seven instead of twelve. And in twelfth grade, they come in with twelve instead of with eighteen. So that's the typical and certainly there are ranges on either side of that, but that's, those are our averages. When you look at historically underserved, when we speak about our racial educational equity policy and we look at where our students of color in the particular populations that we call out, black, African-American, Latino, Pacific Islander, and American Indian, we are, they are overrepresented in Multiple Pathways as compared to district-wide. So that the red bar that is the highest is in our community-based alternative schools, followed by Alliance, our in-district high school. When we look at exclusionary histories, and one of the things that I know you've already received information on, is that for students who've received one or more exclusionary, meaning it's out of school suspension or expulsion, that, that our graduation, our four-year cohort graduation rate drops to forty-five percent from sixty-eight. So when you look at the disciplinary exclusions, it has a direct impact on our ability to graduate students, particularly at the four-year, in the four-year cohort. When we look at who our students are before they enrolled this year in Multiple Pathways programs, they were higher than, at varying ranges, but higher than the district average. So our day and residential treatment schools, our charter schools are similar comparable to the district average. But our, our Alliance in District Alternative and our community-based alternative schools were at a rate five times higher than the district average. When you look at our learning and credit options programs, so again, Portland Evening Scholars, Summer Scholars, Virtual Scholars, you look at the, this is by incidence, the average again is, for Portland Evening Scholars was the highest, followed by Summer Scholars, Virtual Scholars, and then district-wide. When we looked at enrollment trends over the course of the last seven years in Multiple Pathways, this is what we see. So we served last year in thirteen-fourteen, a total of forty-eight hundred students. Our high was in, was in eleven-twelve, serving fifty-one hundred students. But you'll look at each of those lines very differently. So within our community-based alternative schools, the top line on the red, we've actually reduced in the last six years, in the last seven years, excuse me, six hundred and ninety-five seats. So one of the things that we know is that as a district, we have less seats for our contracted alternative schools at the same time that we know with the segmentation analysis and, that with the segmentation analysis that said that we were six hundred seats short, as well as the good news of we're doing a great job and a much better job of re-engaging our dropped-out youth. And so we need that continuum of placements for our students. Part of what we see with the green line, the charter school line, is that over the same period of time, it's increased from, from eleven hundred and fifty students to eighteen hundred and eighty-two last year. One of the things that's important to note about our charter schools is while we have increased our charter school enrollment, it has not been an increase at the high school age. So that, the charter schools that we are, have authorized over the span of time have been either K5s or K8s. The two bottom lines, you'll see, the, the purple line is Dart, the day and residential treatment programs, which have maintained fairly consistently right around five hundred, serving five hundred students per year. And then we have Alliance in the blue, which has also hovered and reduced a little bit over the course of the last seven years. Serving last year, they served three hundred and sixty-four students. The year before that, they served three hundred and forty-two students. So we're starting very slightly to, to increase our enrollment there. And part of what this says also is just how do we have the right resources for our various student populations? So with regard to prevention, our charter schools, so our charter schools provide the opportunity to meet the learning needs through specific models. I just shared some of this. So, so as of last year, we had seventeen hundred and sixty-four students. So what, what was on the trend line was eight charter schools. In September, we opened our ninth charter school, which is Kairos. So that's how we got to eighteen eighty-six. We have nine charter schools and then we work certainly with the, with the board, School Board Charter Committee as well as, you know, our state Oregon regulatory statutes with regard to our charter practice. With regard to learning and credit options, again, these are student, these are students that we serve district-wide. And one of the things that I think is really important to note is that when we talk about district-wide programs, we talk about students in these programs, we talk about students from comprehensive high schools, from focus high schools, from charter high schools, from community-based alternative schools, as well as at times the Reconnection Center. So we're really looking district-wide in a variety of, of placements and school placements that our students have access to, again, accelerate their credit recovery to help them get back on track. In Summer Scholars, which is our largest credit recovery program, we had last summer fourteen hundred and sixteen students enroll who completed a total of nine hundred and seventy-three high school credits. So those are, they completed half credits. Each, there's two sessions and each session you would get point five credit if you completed successfully. And so as a total for the last summer, we, our students earned nine hundred and seventy-three high school credits. That's followed by Portland Evening Scholars, which is, happens during the school year. And that, we had twelve hundred and sixty students participate last year who earned seven hundred and fifty-three credits during the thirteen-fourteen school year. And those are offered in the evening at Benson High School. And then Virtual Scholars is our blended online credit recovery option. And we had three hundred and sixty-three courses that were completed district-wide during the school day. So one of the things that we have talked about and said is how do we help students receive credit recovery during their day or where they are? And so Virtual Scholars has been one of our opportunities to allow that to happen.
Students do that during a free period or something like that?
They schedule them specific to, so that's one of the things where the school counselor at the, at the high school works directly with Virtual Scholars to, to do that. So they can look at their transcript and say, oh, you actually really to get, to accelerate and get you back on track, it's in these particular areas. And if Summer Scholars is an option, Portland Evening Scholars is an option, other at home, at their homeschool, credit recoveries are options, Virtual Scholars is one of those options that we have our Virtual Scholars team of highly qualified, you know, Portland teachers who are working with students district-wide.
Right.
If you went to summer school, so to speak, and you did the summer credit option, what's the most, if I was a kid who wanted to really ram it and I was ready to go with whatever you had, what's the most credits I could get?
You could take both sessions and get one point oh credit.
That's it?
Yep. You could take two point five, two classes of a half credit each.
You can't get three or four credits?
No.
We don't have that? And that's because we just have a?
That's because that's what the amount of time it takes to, to cover the instructional time to get point five credit. So one of the things that we do certainly is that fits right in with one-thirty as well as, you know, all of our ODE requirements around course time. And so part of what we do is we try to also maximize how many students we can serve with a district-wide option. And so we've broken it into two, three-week sessions.
So if I got my one credit in the summer, how many hours a day would I go for how many days?
You would go from eight-thirty to two-thirty for three weeks for point five. And then it's also open with an extended time for folks that need, for students who need tutoring after that, a period of time. So that would be your, you, you could stay later than two-thirty, but you are, you would be required to be there from eight-thirty to two-thirty.
For three weeks?
Correct.
For the point five?
Correct.
Then I come back for another three weeks for the point five? Can I come back for another three weeks? That doesn't sound like that exists.
There's two sessions.
Just two?
There's two sessions.
So we have twelve week, you're going six weeks, six weeks, twelve weeks, okay, thank you.
Three weeks and three weeks.
I mean, three weeks and three weeks, but we only go, so we only go six weeks?
Correct.
Is that, is that a, the reason we don't go twelve weeks? Is that a monetary reason or is that some other reason?
I, I think that there's a number of factors and certainly budget, budget has implications for all of our programming. I think it's also that we employ largely our teachers and so it's also what works for their schedule as well as how do we create a program where we get the greatest amount of student attendance during the summer months. So I think those are all factors that contribute to how we came up with our program model.
Thank you.
Teen Parent Services is another prevention program that we have. So we follow all of our state guidelines and provide individual support, group support, and academic support. So we have services at all, we have our Teen Parent Services team who provides services district-wide wherever students are. And we serve teenage mothers as well as teenage fathers. The only service that teenage fathers do not get, that our teenage mothers get, is because of, for medical reasons, they receive home instruction for six weeks following the delivery of a child. Other than that, both, all of our services are for young men and for young women.
But we, and we only have childcare in a couple of centralized places.
And we only have childcare, there's a slide in, in the future too, but we only have childcare, thank you for bringing that up, Director Regan, we only have childcare at Roosevelt High School and at Madison High School.
But we do, not including our community-based alternatives.
Correct, thank you. Yes. So as far as intervention, our programs that focus on intervention and often intense intervention is when an alternative placement has been determined to be necessary. We have Alliance as well as- have Alliance, as well as our community-based alternative programs. So, at Alliance Alternative High School, we have two campuses. The Alliance on the Benson campus, which we sometimes refer to as ABC, is located, is co-located with the Reconnection Center. So, the students on the video, were students who had come through the Reconnection Center, and then were now being served at Alliance High School, which is co-located. We also, so, we have students, so that's co-located with the Reconnection Center. It operates a Monday-through-Thursday schedule. It operates a flexible schedule, because we often have older students with varying work schedules or family needs. It offers, as you saw in the video, individualized, proficiency-based instruction, and it serves students with a whole variety, a whole variety of needs. Alliance Alternative High School at the Mead Campus is our day program, and it has four CTE strands. And so, there, it's manufacturing, automotive, digital media, and natural resources. And it's, as you heard earlier from a student, one of the things that we've done is we've implemented a social-emotional learning curriculum to pair with our CTE focus.
So, can I ask a question here?
Sure.
I'm completely confused why we would have Alliance Alternative High School on the Benson campus and not have CTE strands as part of that model. I admit, it makes no sense to me. So, can you help me understand that?
So, I think one of the things that's hap, that happened, is that Alliance Day-to-Night Program has, part of what happened was, we had different Alliance evening programs at different places throughout the district. As an example, we had Marshall Night High School. So, we served a lot of students at Marshall Night High School. When we closed Marshall Night High School, we, we, we served students at Madison Ninth High School. And then that has since, that program no longer exists at this time. So, part of what I think has happened, is we haven't had such a concentration of just two campuses, where I feel like now we are engaged in those conversations, as far as, how do we bring CTE to Alliance at Benson? And I will say that there are, there, so that's something that, that we're exploring.
Yeah, I mean, it, it makes so much sense for us to be using that facility with everything that it has in it. So, I, I would love to hear more as we go on that, and trying to get that to happen as soon as possible.
So, those are our Alliance High Schools, and then the other options that we have for students are our community-based organizations, our CBOs. And so, we have two at the middle levels, that serve students in middle school, and we have twelve at the high school level, that serve students between the ages of fourteen and twenty-one. Part of what we have up here is, you can see all the things that we offer in our array of community-based alternative schools. A lot of focus is based on our post-secondary readiness, and so, it's really that college, college and career readiness. So, pathways to post-secondary, often you'll hear students speak about high school diploma or GED programs, where it's with a transition to post-secondary. As an example, the programs that are served at PCC, as you go through and graduate from their programs, you get the first semester of PCC without charge. So, they, they've done different things, there's been very intentional things across our system, as there is across our larger system. There's also those focused intentions within our CBO system to say, how do we help students to do that bridge to what is their next, either career or college?
CBOs serve students who have been expelled by PPS?
Correct.
But that's not only who they serve?
Correct. That is not only who they-
What percentage of, how many kids did we expel last year that ended up being served by CBOs about? Do you, do you have any idea?
I believe it was around forty. And I, and I, and that's an estimate, so I can, I can, we can go back and get that specific number.
All marks, fine.
But, one of the things that's important to note, is that when we showed, when I showed this slide earlier about progressive discipline, we're also talking about students who have had more than one out-of-school suspension. And so, when they, when we have students who have struggles with behavior and progressive discipline, if they are expelled from a particular school, we, they're expelled from a PP, being on a PPS building at times, but it doesn't negate our responsibility as a school district to serve them. And so, this is our opportunity to make sure that we are saying, we absolutely need students to continue their education, and here is how we would like to help connect you to where is the next right place for you.
Can you be expelled on Tuesday and then a CBO on Wednesday?
I don't know that you could, I'm not sure that that-
Over within a week or something?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I just double-check a clarification there? People, I often hear people make the comment that we, we push kids out of our comprehensive high schools into community-based organizations, or alternative high schools, to improve our graduation rate. And I just want to clarify, right, that if somebody started at our comprehensive high schools and then leaves, but goes to one of our districts, whether it's a contracted, or one of our own high schools, that they, their graduation rate, or their success or not success, is still assigned back to that community comprehensive. Is that correct?
So, we are, they are pre-PPS students, so we're all in this together, serving our PPS students. And so, I'll get, there, there's a little bit, just a little bit about slides, but what you're referencing, Director Blile, is that accountable schools, so if ODE has a report card and you are an accountable school, if you left an accountable school and you went and graduated from a CBO, the count goes to the accountable school. So, it would go back to the comprehensive high school. And I have a, I have a graphic that will show just how, how, how the programs are working together, to help our graduation rate overall.
Thank you for the clarification, that they're all our kids.
So, intervention, our, our Day and Residential Treatment Schools is comprised of seven schools. And so, I already shared a little bit about this, is that we have host mental health agencies who provide the mental health treatment, and we provide the educational services. And we have multiple pathways, social work services, and so, we're working to incorporate social work services within our department. So, we understand that we have students with a high level of need, and so, we're, we have, currently, we have three MSW interns, and we're working to say, how do we continue to meet the need, as well as to work, as well as to work with TSPC and Portland State, to look at, how do we encourage folks to get, students to get the initial school social worker license, now that that is one of our licenses within TSPC? Okay, and then re-engagement. So, our Reconnection Services, they, our Reconnection Services Team provides individual outreach to students district-wide, and we do that in two ways. So, the Reconnection Center is a physical location at Benson, where we serve students physically, at, physically in our location. Reconnection Services, I think of as outside and everywhere. So, we're outside, we are in the community, we're at a variety of schools, we're in people's homes, or in different agencies, talking to students about, how can we help them get re-enrolled in school, and what would be a great school placement for them. We do that both in a district-wide setting, as well as we have HSGI, our High School Graduation Initiative, which focuses re-engagement efforts in the Franklin Cluster, as well as the Roosevelt Cluster. Our door-knocking campaign that we, and thank you to some of our board members and our student representative, who participated this year, which we really appreciate. So, we are, activities related to our door-knocking campaign, we can't solely say it was the door-knocking campaign, but activities related to the door-knocking campaign, and related to, you may have seen the, the murals that say, if you left high school before graduating, Portland Public Schools wants you back. We have, a hundred and fourteen students have been returned since our door-knocking campaign. So, we know that we're really proud of what we're doing, and we know that it's making a difference for students. Steve?
Is there, the door-knocking campaign, I think is great. Do we have other specific programs within this group of programs, that actually go into kids' homes to try to get them back, or go find kids who are homeless or whatever, to try to get them back in school? I was, I think I was out at Alliance, and I said, who do you have that can go out into kids' homes? And I'm not sure if this is correct, but I don't think they, that they had basically anyone. I mean, do we have people who specifically have that as their responsibility someplace throughout this?
That is exactly this team. So, what we have, is we have the Reconnection Services Team, and along with the Reconnection Center, works together, and this is one of the last slides I'm going to show you, and it speaks to exactly that. So, I think it answers exactly your question, Director Beal. So, in the last three years, if you go through just our last three-year totals, in the last three years, we have done outreach, just like you're speaking of, to students receiving outreach services was four thousand one hundred and two students. Of that four thousand one hundred and two students, we have brought back into school twenty-three hundred and thirty-nine students.
So, how many people, how many people's on that outreach team?
So, we have five people on the Reconnection Center team, the district-wide team, and we have four people on our HSGI team.
That what, that which team?
Our High School Graduation Initiative, which is focused in the Roosevelt Cluster and the Franklin Cluster. It's a federal grant, and so, it's, we have, we live by the parameters of the grant, which are focused on those two clusters. So, I'm just going to say, so, out of that thirty, out of that twenty-three hundred and thirty-nine students, some of them were directly placed. The ones that were not directly placed, we had three hundred and twenty-nine students come through our Reconnection Center. So, we had students who, it might not have been an easy, oh, this is the great next school for you, and it's really easily identifiable. We've had students who had their IEPs had expired, or they had different circumstances. We really need to have some time, and to have them connect back to school, and for us to really do a nice wraparound job of connecting and making, and developing a true understanding of what really would be the best next fit for these students. And so, our Reconnection Center is where students come, but they don't have to come through our Reconnection Center. Many of them, as you can see, twenty-three hundred and thirty-seven, are, are directly placed. So, that's a lot more than come through our Reconnection Center. As far as that, so our, so our placement rate from the total, fifty-seven percent of the students we've done outreach to in the last three years have been connected back to school. Of those students, of the students that have been connected back to school, fifty-four percent of our students are students of color, fifty-eight percent of our students are male, and fifty-one percent of our students are seventeen or older. And I think one of the things that we're really passionate about is making sure that we're not forgetting our older students.
There's some percentage differences that are pretty striking on that. Percentage total students who are students of color goes from thirty-eight to fifty-nine, the students placed with the Reconnection Center goes ninety-four to sixty-three to one-seventy-two. Are you learning things those years? Is that's what's making the difference, or do you have more staff? Is that what you think's making the difference? Which, which, I mean, did we have less money in twenty-eleven, twelve than we have in twenty-thirteen, fourteen? Or what's the discrepancy, do you think? What would you do? To what would you attribute it?
I think there's a whole variety of things. One is that they're different students, and, and so, our, and, and we are learning every year. So, are we learning? Absolutely. We're learning every year. And I think one of the things that, that had, that we have had, is we've had some changes in our programming. So, for instance, our co-location has been really co-located and, and working in tandem with Alliance at Benson, has really happened over the last two years. So, I mean, there's different things where we've just developed programming in a different way over time. So, what's working? So, this is directly back to Director Blile's question. So, the impact on our four-year and five-year graduation rates, as PPS, as a district, when, there's a lot of confusion around when students in their last, in their last point of enrollment is either DART, a Day and Residential Treatment School, or a CBO. And so, when we looked at, as our, in our research department, students who had their last point of enrollment being a CBO or a DART school, then those students completing, there's two slides. This one is specific to high school diploma. So, what we see in the last three years, is each of the last three years, it adds two percent to our high school graduation rate. In our five-year rate, which is certainly a more, I, I, I mean, our four-year rate is one data point, but when you have students who are coming in at seventeen and a half with more than a year behind, a five-year rate is, is another really important rate for us. So, as is the six-year. So, when we have, we look at our five-year rates, we have three percent each of the last three years, as far as how students being served by the CBOs or DART schools are contributing to the, to all of us working together for high school, high school graduation.
What's that?
With the next slide, we have total completions. So, total completions include high school diplomas, they include adult high school diplomas, they include modified diplomas, and they include GEGs. And so, when we look at what our, our last, again, the same last point of enrollment, being our, being our CBOs or DART school, these are the results that we can peel, and peel back and look to say, this was the impact over the course of the last three years. When we look at learning and credit options over the last two years, this is the impact as a, as a total. So, two thousand ninety-seven point five credits earned in twelve thirteen, and two thousand one hundred and thirteen credits earned in thirteen fourteen. And then when we look at our teen parent graduation rates, so when we look at our teen parent graduation rates, when the district has provided childcare, is the blue line, and the numbers over the last five years have ranged between seventy-seven and a hundred percent. And the, and the range in the, in, of the red line is, for our teen parents for whom we have not provided childcare, it is at least thirty-five percent lower.
So, that investment, very clear here, that investment doubles graduation rate for teen parents?
Yep.
Doubles it.
And, and why is, why is, are we not providing services for the red line?
So, we have, we don't have child, we have childcare centers located at Roosevelt High School and at Madison High School. Those are the only high schools that we currently in a comprehensive focus or Alliance doesn't have it either. So, Madison and Roosevelt are the only high schools in PPS schools that, that we provide as a district childcare, that we have childcare centers. And we know that we mirror, so what this data says is, we mirror national data, which is childcare is the, and the provision of childcare is the number one barrier to high school graduation. So, what's next, is we have our, our recommendations from our segmentation analysis. So, as we have in our Reconnection Center, and certainly in our placement with our CBOs, been the early warning system for the district, one of the things that we have done is to look at, how do we build our early warning system? So, the High School Action Team, and particularly the Subcommittee on High School System Alignment, made recommendations about early warning system growth and coordination, which is also in the segmentation analysis, growth of district-wide credit, credit recovery options, additional home, high school credit recovery options, continuing to provide services to improve our services for off-track students in every, in every high school, comprehensive focus and alternative, and additional social work capacity, and additional counselor with, within multiple pathways to graduation, was recently received with additional funding that was just provided, which is much appreciated at Portland Evening Scholars. Our alternative accountability framework is the report card that you saw and that we have here tonight. And what we're really looking at is, is digging in and saying, how do we measure growth in a variety of areas that make sense for the student population that alternative schools are charged with serving? And so, this is more about the report card. We are currently doing the second year of our pilot report cards, which will be out in March, aligned with our, and we're aligning them with our other metrics. Lastly, we're preparing for a Request for Proposal for next year. Every five years, we have a Request for Proposal for our community-based alternative schools, and so, we're preparing that, and that will be part of next year's work. And specific, there's certainly specific populations that the segmentation call, analysis calls out, and we certainly know of who's overrepresented in our, in our alternative system. And so, we'll have a particular focus on the ability to serve those students. And then, lastly, we are really thrilled that Portland Public Schools has been called out as one of sixteen exemplar school districts across the nation with regard to our re-engagement efforts. And so, we are, we're selected to host the Fourth Annual National Reengagement Plus Convening, that's taking place here next week, and where we will have school district representatives from around the country, and policymakers engage in conversations about how do we do and continue to do a good job, re-engaging our students who have left school. And so, we're excited to that. We welcome all of you to that. That's next week. And we are partnering with Portland Community College, the National Gateway to College Network, and the City of Portland to host that convening, which is funded by the National League of Cities and Aspen Youth Funders Group. Along with that work- Along with that work, the Blackmail Achievement Initiative work will be part of that, which certainly has a thread from national, state, city, and local with our school district.
So Karina, could you make sure we get information on that? I would have loved to have had that on my calendar, on this conference next week.
Sure.
I mean, I think, did we?
I think you did. I think it's on your tracker, but we'll do a specific.
And so it, it's not everything, but it's certainly a start of an understanding, and I appreciate your time in getting to share about the wonderful students and staff and programs. And we welcome you all to come hear from us and come see our students and staff and programs.
Great, so are you ready for more questions?
I am, and I'm sure that my team is too.
Okay, great, thank you. Colleagues, questions?
I'd kind of just like some clarification.
Go ahead.
We have this list right here. Which, yeah, it doesn't say which are, which are ones that are controlled and run by Portland Public Schools and which are ones that we contract for. Could, could we just, Alliance, that's run by Portland Public Schools?
Correct.
And Access, that's Portland Public Schools.
I think all of these on the first page.
Medallion Learning Center, okay, Portland Evening Scholars.
So our contracted programs are programs that have their own sta, that hire their own staff. So that's our charter schools and our contracted community-based alternative schools.
So.
The staff that we provide is our special education staff to all of our programs district-wide, including our contracted schools.
So Helen's View, Mount Scott?
So.
CBOs?
Yes.
NEA, Open Meadow, Rosemary, those are all CBOs?
Schools who hire their own teachers and we provide the special education.
So what's our responsibility with those? Open Meadow, which is a CBO, we give them money, but what else do we do in relationship to them? Anything else other than give them money?
We, we partner with them to ser, to serve PPS students.
What does that mean, to partner with them?
So we provide, part of what we do in, in the way that we, that we claim all of our students is we have the same programming as far as supports with regard to bigger things like bus passes or with regard to bigger things where we have services. So we have professional development opportunities, we have training opportunities, we provide special education teachers throughout our district. And so we provide resources as a district around training and professional development. We also, per their contract, whether it's a contracted charter school or a contracted community-based alternative school, there are responsibilities that the school also maintains separate from us as a district.
So what's, what are the ones that are?
So we don't hire their teachers, they hire their own teachers.
All right.
So.
What other major ones do we, where, where, do we have any other major responsibilities?
Well, we have all the major responsibilities that, to meet all of our district and state standards with regards to testing, with regards to graduation requirements, with regards to instructional hours. So all of those things that are required by us and for all of our schools, our contracted schools are required as well.
So what happens if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing?
We have a review process with all of our schools every year. And so we have a fiscal review process, we have a school site visit process, and we have a compliance review process that happens for each of our schools every year, both our charter schools and our contracted community-based alternative schools.
Do we have a formula for providing money, or do we just do that on a school-by-school basis?
No, we have a formula both for our charter schools and for our alternative schools.
What is this formula for the alternative ones?
So for the alternative schools, we pay, we have our formula, which is eighty percent of our student ABM. And then we add, we put that into a formula as far as with our net operating expense. And so there's a district formula that we, that we create, that we create as a district for all of our students, but the percentage that goes in for students in alter, in our contracted alternative schools is actually at an eighty percent ratio.
Does that include the, all the other types of supports we do, or that just includes, is that a lump sum? We can give them that money and then they use it how they think, or they should make sure they meet our thing, I mean, which?
So for all of our contracted schools, we reimburse per student served and the days that students are served. So every month, we receive an invoice from every single school that says how many students they served and which days, and we reimburse for students enrolled and attending at those schools.
Thank you.
Yep.
Colleagues, other comments?
So I had, I had a variety of questions. So first of all, thank you to everybody who's here and who does this amazing work with our kids. I was part of the high school action team, several of us, I think, were last year. And one of the things that we talked about quite a bit there was trying to figure out how to support our kids better in our community comprehensives, whether that would be care teams or graduation coaches or social service workers, trying to figure out how to provide similar kinds of services but at our community comprehensives themselves. Would that still fall under you and your department, or does that then fall into a whole different category?
So services that are provided at focus and comprehensive schools are, are not my purview. So when we talk about, with, with the exception of credit recovery services. And so when we talk about, like, we've added counselors or social workers, that would be in the staffing table for those schools typically, or it would be, it would, it would be in our general education staffing and services. So those would not fall under multiple pathways.
So in terms of the advocate on your staff, Carol, who's, who's making those programs happen? Who, who is that?
So Shay James is right now the person who's leading programming for high schools, so she's over. And then each senior director supervises the high school in their cluster. So you kind of have two layers of what's happening, one that's really focused on supervision of what's going on in the school, and then Shay that's doing the systemic work. So she is coordinating CTE efforts, for instance, the early warning system development will be there. Things like high school graduation initiative, though, which actually do provide supports to kids in the clusters and in the high schools are under Karina. So there's a little bit of, you know, straddling of the two.
And hopefully there's some, you have a relationship hopefully with our high school counselors so that if, if kids are struggling, they understand what's available.
Absolutely. And, and, and one of the resources I was going to say actually is student services falls under our, in their community and family partnerships. So, so there's a variety of district-wide supports that we are all connected, and there's like, like the superintendent mentioned, that falls, there's the Office of School Performance as well as the Office of School Support work together in providing some of those services.
And actually, a number of the support services you just heard about would, like, even the learning credit options, our four students who are still enrolled in comprehensive high schools but are supporting them staying in, teen parent services, I mean, there's a number of things that are supporting students staying in. Some of the services provided by our CBOs, like Step Up, are supports for, to help students stay in their comprehensive high school, but trying to do more wraparound support. So you've kind of got.
Right, right.
How are we all wrapping our arms around all of our kids? Yeah.
So it would be helpful for us, for me at least, prior to our next budget development to also understand what is being done in those areas. So if Shay or the senior directors could come in and talk with us. So just as we're trying to figure out how to prioritize and have the most impact on graduation rates, do we invest here, do we invest there? Probably both, but I'd like to understand better where you think the biggest impact can be made. And I'm always wanting to try to have services as close to home as possible.
And one of the things we had prioritized for the staffing process this round was looking at the school-wide support table, which is looking at counseling, librarian, I mean, what are all of the other adult support roles in, that we think, believe each school needs to have? So that's one of the directly responsive to that, again, we will be talking about that with you guys.
Because one of the things you mentioned is that we're five or six hundred seats short of capacity that we need, and then the immediate question is, but do we need that out in the CBO world? Or could we be bringing that, those same sort of resources in-house and?
Right, questions.
Just trying to understand that.
Right, questions.
I had one question that's, I'm a little puzzled by, if you can help me. So I've been serving a, you know, as, I've been going to all the Portland Gang Task Force meetings every other Friday for a couple of years now, and I've recently joined a juvenile justice task force. I've also been asked to be in the Local Public Safety Coordinating Council Task Force on Racial Equity recently, which I'm just going to start to go to those. When I'm at those, especially at the Gang Task Force, I've been really grateful to see some of our community-based organization partners. NEA is there always, Helen's View, POIC, huge presence, Rosemary Anderson folks. What I'm not seeing as much, Carol, is who at Portland Public Schools is attending these kinds of meetings regularly? Because all of these meetings are basically trying to work toward the same thing, which is supporting our youth who are sometimes struggling. And whether it's the county, county folks there, city folks there, pastors, community-based organizations, I mean, everybody's there for the same reason, they're trying to support our youth. So I'm trying to figure who, who at Portland Public Schools is our contact there?
So within multiple pathways, we have attendance there from our HSGI coordinators attend. And then often, Ms. Cheryl James, our teen parent program director, also attends those meetings.
So could you make sure they introduce themselves to me?
Sure.
At those meetings, so I know who they are, so we can kind of coordinate together. I often give little updates, and I would love to hear them giving updates at these meetings, because there's such a thirst in the community for engagement, not just from Portland Public Schools, but from all of the Multnomah County schools, because we're all in this together, and we're all trying to figure out how we interconnect and partner. But I would just love to see a much, I, I can tell you there's a yearning in the community for more engagement from K-12 in all of those discussions. And maybe we're there and just not being as visible or outspoken as we can or should be.
I was going to say Tammy Jackson also serves as Arlie's on a number of those. Lulenzel Poe serves on a number of things. And actually, our, we just had a team who just went and presented our discipline data, right?
And it was wonderful, and people were thrilled to hear from them, and they did an awesome job. But we should be attending regularly. George Weatherroy often attends, and there's one other person who does, but I'm just not seeing the consistency, or at least it's not visible to me. And I think it should be, I think it's a huge opportunity for us, so, thanks.
Matt?
Couple of quick questions and then a couple of observations, so hopefully we can get through them real quick. But the first one is, is regarding the re-engagement, reconnection services. And I'm interested in knowing what role our community partners can play in that and what role they do play in that reconnection work.
Carolyn, you want to come answer that?
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, you're fine.
Stretch your legs.
Yeah, stretch your legs, thank you.
I'm the vice principal at the Reconnection Center, and I was a, a part of the startup of reconnection services before it was known as reconnection services in two thousand ten, eleven. So I've been with the program in a variety of fashions for several years. One of the things we, somebody brought up the timeline of the reconnection services and the change in the data. And what I'll just say is that in two thousand eleven, twelve, we added outreach coordinators. Prior to that, we were just the center. So when we added outreach coordinators, it took us a while to get some traction around their role. We added two initially, and now we have three who are outreach coordinators. Go, they do go to doors, knock on doors, go in, literally jump in fences while kids are escaping out the back window to say, hey, we want you back in school, we're not here to get you in trouble. So, and we have plenty of stories of that. With regard to reconnection services, one of the areas that we know we are working on is coordinating with the folks in our community-based alternative schools and in juvenile justice. We do have folks who, perhaps inconsistently, but do go to Gang Task Force meetings to try to connect those partnerships. And so one of our pieces on our work plan is to create a more cohesive approach to networking around re-engagement. And we're actually working on a grant with some other partners right now, NEA included, to figure out how we can have a strategy specifically around a county-wide coordinated effort around re-engagement. Because we know that every single one of our programs is also doing the same work, so how do we not trip over each other, but how do we do a more coordinated effort? And, and that, that really is the next edge of our work.
Yeah, and one of the reasons I ask is that, I, I mean, it really comes down to how do we, how do we address absenteeism? How do we bring kids back into school? What is remarkable with that, I'll, actually, I'll get that in a second, with three FTE, I'm interested in this, last year, eight hundred and forty number, total number of students placed in schools, was that across the district, so it included comprehensive schools, alternative-based charters, and all of the above?
And, and so, yes, so we pull that data from a database of, because we don't, our district database doesn't include students who are out of school, right? So we keep our own database, and then we match it up with our synergy database. The students who are out of school then come to us through a variety of methods, both through those three outreach coordinators, also through referrals to juvenile justice, Department of Human Services. They may be coming out of a treatment, residential treatment place, and we collectively put that data into a database and then collectively look at how many of those students are placed in a school. So that's all, that's all high school and, and, yeah, that's high school students. There's also middle school students in a different bucket in the database.
And I think, back to the comment portion, I think this is important because particularly over the last, well, yeah, over the last year and even more than that, if you've been a part of the, and tracking the alternative-based work within this district, you've had people march in talking about the drain of resources out from comprehensive schools into alternative schools. And, and what you're describing is not only a, an increase in graduation rates this last year by six percent in a four-year cohort, but in a five-year completion by twelve percent. You're also talking about capturing almost six million dollars in revenue from the lost revenue from these students, and that's a conservative number. A lot of these students, based on the demographics you shared, a lot of these students come with a lot of entitlement dollars, they come with a lot of resources with them. So seven million conservatively, I don't know another program, frankly, within the district that it both improves graduation rates and, and is revenue generating.
How much revenue are we generating now? If we're bringing back seven million, how much does it cost us to get to that? How much are the total cost, what's the total budget of all the alternative schools that we're talking about here this evening, that took, from the school district?
From the school district, it is approximately seven million and four hundred thousand.
So we're pretty close to seven million. If we're generating seven million, we're spending seven million.
Right.
I'm not sure how it generates.
And the other thing is that.
I'm following Mr. Morton's reasoning.
The other programs?
You don't understand capturing students and.
I understand capturing students, I'm just wondering, if it costs seven million to capture students worth seven million, it, how does it generate revenue? I don't understand that. Not that I'm not for it, I'm, I'm for putting more money there, but I don't understand how it would generate revenue.
So that, the seven million that Matt is, that Director Morton is talking about?
That was that thumbnail sketch, actually.
That's the, that's of the eight hundred-some students that we re-engaged.
Right.
We serve between our contracted alternative schools, if you're just talking about those, and Alliance, over three thousand kids.
Okay.
So those eight hundred are a subset of the three thousand. And the eight hundred are not only in the contracted alternatives in Alliance, they are also in our comprehensive high schools about, I don't remember the percentage, but there's a percentage of those students who re-engage back into their neighborhood high school, and they come through the Reconnection Center because they were out of school for some reason, and when they want to come back, it's not the right timing. So they'll come and spend time and do credit recovery with us and then enroll. So my point is.
So if seven thousand, seven million, seven million, and it's thirty, and it's thirty percent back, you would be recapturing thirty percent of the seven million?
I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not following your math. All, what I know is that Director Morton said that it's about seven million of the eight hundred that we re-engage. That's seven million of re-engaged kids through our database, through our reconnection services. It's not necessarily all of the students who've been re-engaged. Many of the students who come back to either a comprehensive high school or a contracted school walk back in not through reconnection services at all, but mostly through word of mouth, friends, family, that sort of thing, so.
Do you chart that?
We could, we don't have that immediately.
I'm wondering, because I was trying to actually see where you were generating the money that he was talking about, because I couldn't put it together in my head, so.
We don't collect money on school, on students that aren't in school.
No, we do not.
But we have to spend a certain amount to get that collection. And I'm just saying, did it, is it actually generating funds or not, I don't know, it doesn't sound to me like it.
We generate eight hundred million dollars. Just because we spend it doesn't mean that it isn't generating.
Well, sure, it's normally generated.
So that's why this is a confusing thing.
It is.
Because some people don't want to know.
Who's that?
Ruth?
I don't want to know. I'm just asked six questions trying to figure out. Why would I not want to know?
Took them six tries to get it to you, it didn't work.
And they're still not there, no.
So I just wanted to say thank you so much to everyone for all your great work and for the thorough presentation and all the information. And I guess I just wanted to sort of echo or reinforce that, just the, really appreciating your, everybody's focus on a system and that we need to get better at that. And really, so for instance, I mean, I know sometimes with all the different challenges that many of our students are facing, that gap piece is, is so disturbing of leaving in the length of time and how hard it is to get back on track. Everyone's working so hard to do that. So just, just looking in terms of our budget again, hoping that we're going to see, you know, soon in our budget discussions, a comprehensive system-wide that includes our alternative system as well as our comprehensive, how the, what you were talking about before, Carol. I'm really excited and interested to see all that and then to see specific budget requests and kind of the plan of how we're going to go forward. So it feels like we're moving away from the siloing of the past and that we're really seeing the importance of having that connection there and having it be a, a system that's, that's serving our kids regardless of where they are, but is really mindful of, of, of that. And having that, minimizing those, those gaps that are so destructive to student success. And also just wanted to thank you for organizing both the in-person and the video on testimony from students. And how powerful and inspiring that is, so really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Craig?
I just wanted to say, in the short time that I've been on the board, I've just really appreciated the increased accountability and the efforts we've made to make sure that it's both a cohesive system and that we're doing right by our students. I mean, as I look at the principals here and the support services here, it's folks that are being really intentional about what we're doing and how we're doing it. And really understanding that it's about support for our kids. And so I just wanted to say thank you for the work that's gone into that, because I have seen a significant change just in the three years since I've been here. I also want to mention that this might be a little bit in your purview, but probably more outside. But I'm looking forward to hearing more about our early warning system and I think that'll be part of our budget discussions. Because I do think that's an area that we still, it'll be important for us to wrap around students early. And there are some indicators that we should be able to know pretty early. And I'll be interested to hear how the high school graduation initiative plays into that. Because I know, I think you mentioned that it's a federal grant and it probably will be ending soon. And so just how do we continue that work or what it is? Because what I've heard from sites is how important it is to have those bodies to go out and connect with the students and to say, hey, we know you're there and we're noticing you're missing, can we help with something? That's what I have.
Got that? Well, Tom, did you have anything?
Okay.
Bobby?
I had a couple more clarifying questions and then a couple of others still. I was a principal for a day at Pioneer Schools. And, and I know they're more specific to special ed, but I, I think I had assumed they were kind of under your bailiwick also.
So a lot of people, that's a common thought. And it makes sense because there are students who are in an alternative school placement. And so Pioneer is, is completely special education students. And so they are served under the special education department. The other thing that I would say is for our day and residential treatment students, they are either placed by Oregon Youth Authority or by the Department of Human Services, which is not necessarily the case with Pioneer, there are PPS residents.
Okay, do you interface with them a fair amount?
Yes.
That sounds like it. I hope, I hope. And also, this is just a silly question, but MLC as an alternative school, is there a reason it's an alternative school versus a focused school? I, I'm just not putting my head around that one still.
So MLC and access are also alternative schools. The reason that they don't fall under this umbrella is because the primary purpose for Alliance is dropout recovery and kind of that alternative placement. And that, and there are seven reasons by statute for having an alternative school. We just really focus on the need for alternative placement in a much more narrow focus, which is kind of the students that you see, the students that we've articulated that we serve. And so their, so theirs is a broader spectrum with regard to the alternative student statute.
As I was reading the materials for this meeting, it included access and MLC under your-
So we try not to confuse folks. And so when we look at who are, believe it or not, so when we look at who are, or who are alternative schools are or where our, where our alternative schools are, we list them together because they are all alternative schools by nature. They're not gen N schools, they're not focus option schools, they're not charters. And so we list the three of them together because they have the same category with regard to Oregon statute.
So I'm going to just say, part of when we, just as part of enrolling and transfer and one of the, one of the recommendations is that we go through and we do the review of all of our focus option schools. And we included MLC and access in that review precisely for this reason. Because generally speaking, like an alternative has been about services to a particular population of students with particular needs that you're addressing with the alternative education services. And the focus options have been more a particular program model and, or program philosophy.
Access, access to me makes sense as an alternative school, because it's serving a specific population. But MLC feels like it's more of a program, so I'm-
And with that, and that's exactly the conversation we've had many times, which is why we said, let's put these in and just do the review and re-ask the question, where do they fit in our system?
Okay.
Yeah, and this exact dialogue happens frequently, so.
So I had two more questions. The, the first was you gave us a survey, a high school exit survey?
Yes.
And the last question talks about have you, and there's a whole variety of questions, filled in an application for post-secondary, been accepted to post-secondary, taken a community college, all these different questions. And I was surprised at how frequently the answers were no. Because I, I guess I, I, of all of our schools, I feel like our alternative schools are kind of trying to help kids get through and moving on to the next step. So is that, should I be surprised by this or?
Go ahead.
So this was a survey that was created several years ago when we had a contract with Pacific Research and Evaluation to evaluate our programs. One of the things that we asked our programs to do is administer this survey to all school, all students who are leaving their school at any time during the year or at the end of the year. Over ti, the intent originally was that this, these questions would only be answered by graduating students. But I, but over time, I believe what happened, and, and we've actually suspended that because we're initiating a new climate survey district-wide. Over time, is I think that all the students were answering these questions and I think it was a-
So you might have a ninth grader who wouldn't have taken it.
Or you had a student who was two years away from finishing.
Okay, good, I'm glad I asked the question because it didn't make sense to me. So when we did have high school cluster principals come last year and ask one of the questions that was always fun to ask is if we could give you, in the next budget cycle, a couple million dollars, what would your highest priority be?
I would say thank you.
Any, any sense of what the highest need or the, where you're just itching to get a little bit more funding?
So I think there's a, there's a lot of ways that, there's a lot of need and there's a lot of things as far as wraparound supports, as far as staffing and FTE. As you've articulated many times, we've been, as everyone, all the directors have, we've been in a cut vote for so many years that last year felt nice that it was the first year where we kind of exhaled for a bit. And it would be really nice to start building back to where, to previous levels where we've been previous, where we've been previously. I can think of a variety of things, the discovery curriculum that we've done at Alliance at MEAC, I think is, is, I'll be very interested and I'm very optimistic about it making a difference with our student retention and our, and how that unfolds. I think there's a variety of, of needs that we have. The largest need that I think we have is that we don't have enough seats for our students in alternative schools. And so I just think as a system, when we look next year for our RFP, the students that I worry about the most are when we bring, do, I mean, we're doing a great job, Carla and her team and Joseline and her team and others are doing a fantastic job. My biggest worry is where do we, where do we welcome students to?
That's good, thank you.
When you say that, are you talking about Portland Public Schools or are you talking about CBOs? Because we get back to that same conversation about revenue. And if we added more seats in those, we would get the revenue from the students coming in.
So when we look at the demographics that were up early and they're on this report card that show students have been to four high schools prior to coming into an alternative school. I would love, we serve like Carla just articulated, some schools will go, some students will go back to their neighborhood school. That will be the right next choice for some students. That will not be the next best choice for a lot of our students who will have told us, we've been there, we've tried that. And so I think in our alternative continuum of services and interventions, we need to have a variety of placement options for the different students we serve. So one of, and I'll just give one as an example.
So when I said that, I was talking about Alliance, not our comprehensives. So Alliance or CBOs or both?
Both.
That was, when I, we showed that chart up there about charters and how there were fewer students, but in the same breath, almost, you were talking about how the need was great. I was having a hard time seeing how those two were matching. And it is because we are not contracting for as many seats? Again, I guess it's, for me, it's like, if it's a revenue issue, if we're receiving the money from the state to educate these kids, why aren't we going ahead and, and developing more seats?
We've also lot, a number of our CBOs have actually during, didn't survive the recession.
Right, I know that's a problem.
And actually went, nonprofits that could not sustain the financial model to withstand the recession. Yeah, I mean, truly, we saw a number of nonprofits go under.
And we heard the instructor or the teacher from MEAC talk about how crowded they were also. So I guess the other issue or question is, is there going to be another place? We already heard about closing down different MEACs around and so, I mean, that's another question, correct?
Actually, you know, another factor that we heard is as we have, like when we added our world language cri, credit requirement, it, we had a number of our smaller CBO alternatives who could no longer meet that graduation requirement. Yeah, it was too hard to do in a small setting. And struggled to do it for a number of years and then just couldn't and went and decided to go out of the high school business, so.
That's, that's exactly right. I mean, we have essential skills, our requirements are just different and more, and more intensive than they were previously.
I just want to really quickly clarify and, or confirm that our district boundary review process and our sort of system-wide reviews, including our alternatives as well as our early edu, I mean, it's, this is the whole system, right?
As far as where they're located, you mean, and what we should add?
Yeah, located, location and need.
Because there's no boundaries for them, yeah.
Right, right, but I mean, that conversation is going to include program configuration and-
I'm going to say yes, I don't know that we've called that out specifically, but yes, we're looking at system-wide, how are we serving our kids? And where are we locating things and what's the system-wide impact by how we locate them?
And early education as well.
Correct.
Rather than displacing and-
Yes.
One real quick thing that I forgot to ask, and you may or may not have this, I think I'd be interested in seeing it if you do, but the, the second slide of content where you have the on-track, off-track, young, old, near, far, I would really be interested in seeing, we know that over fifty percent of our students in alternative schools are kids of color. I'd be interested in seeing that disaggregated across, across populations.
So if, if you look, I'm happy to get that to you. If you look at the front of the report card, it does it as far as for students in our CBOs and Alliance.
Great.
So you'll see that it says, black twenty percent, Native American four percent, Hispanic twenty-one percent, multi-eight percent, Pacific Islander one percent, white forty-three percent, Asian five percent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I, I also just had a couple of comments and questions. First of all, being, thank you very much, it's wonderful information. And thank you to all of you who are attending tonight, we appreciate you being here. One of my comments is that I think that we always have to remember that as much as we would like to have all of our students returned to our comprehensive high schools, there are those students who just won't or can't, whatever the reason. And so I'm very pleased that we have these alternatives that are available to those students. So thank you again. I asked you about the charters. We also had the same teacher speak tonight about an increase in special education students at MEAC. So it, over, over fifty percent of the kids are special ed. Is that, is that a right number and what is, what, what?
It's, it's not over fifty percent. It is, it has dramatically increased in the, in the last two years. And part of, and I think there's different reasons for that. So one thing I will just share quickly is that as we've had more special education students attend MEAC this year, we have asked for more additional FTE after the beginning of the year. And we have had some adjustments within our special education teacher system to accommodate for that. And so, so there are more special education students within the Alliance system and we are receiving more staffing than we have in previous years for those students. So that is one piece of information. The, the point of it being more than fifty percent is not our intention and that you get into kind of different categories of populations. And that hasn't been the intention and it is not the intention in, at Alliance. And so one of the things that we also have when we just articulated is, and, and you've seen it in the slides as well as when superintendents have just talked about the schools that are closing, is we have our special education students struggle at a greater degree in our system. And so they are overrepresented in our alternative system and we have fewer alternative options than we have had in the past. So we have, we're carrying the higher concentration with a smaller number of schools.
Okay, okay. And then I also noticed in the materials that you provided for us that, I could have this wrong, but for the summer and the evening and all of the, there's a charge for those. So I was curious why we would charge our students for those when, on the other hand, we're bringing them back for fifth year or if they're in an alternative program, there's no charge. Why would we charge them when we, by doing the summer or the other scholar programs, they could graduate on time and wouldn't be in those programs?
So one of the things that we've had is, in the short hi, history of, in the last six or seven years, we've, we originally had four grants that funded the majority of summer scholars. And what we've had is we've had those grants expire over time. And so when it's beyond the calendar year, part of what we've had is we've had a tuition base and we've worked to reduce that and there are budget implications to that. So I think those are, one of the things we have is we have categories of how do we serve students tuition-free? And we are working to do that as well as our student population in summer scholars has shifted to a greater degree of free and reduced lunch students than it has been in the past. And so we've made those, those financial shifts as well, where it's a much, it's either free or it's a very, it's a much smaller tuition base.
So when you're listing the things that are your priorities, where would that fit?
It, it's up there. Because one of the things is that when I talk about it being beyond this, this calendar year, then the summer programming, we don't collect ADM for those students. And so that is- And so that is definitely a budget consideration.
Really? Wow, but schools can, can, can collect their ADM if, if they retain a student for a fifth year? That's great, that makes a lot of sense, okay. Not. Okay, thank you. Steve?
What's the percent of kids who are not in special education who are, have severe reading, uh, problems? You can define it severe however you'd like.
So you, we can look at, I don't have that data with me at the moment, you can look at any of our school websites and we can talk about the amount of students who are meeting or exceeding in either math or reading.
No, I mean severe, big ones, not meeting or exceeding, but like two, three, four years behind in reading, do we keep that?
We have those, we, we can get that information for you, we have that information, yeah.
Could you send that to me if it's not difficult?
Sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No, great, thank you so much, sorry we kept you so late.
Nice job, you guys, that was great.
Appreciate you all being here, thank you again, everybody out there. I'm going to call for a five minute break.
Okay, at this time, um, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is school improvement plans. Um, Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this item and these people?
I would, so we have Jola Fontaine, who's the Senior Director of Funded Programs, and Greg Wallach, who is the Director of School Programs, who will soon be joined, um, by others who I'll let them introduce. Talking about our school improvement plans and really looking at, um, this was something that we did an audit on, or the board, the board's auditor did an audit on a number of years ago. We responded to, we piloted and we're now going district wide with a particular school improvement plan, so I'll turn it over to Joe.
I am Greg Wallach. Good evening, I'm Greg Wallach, I'm Director of School Programs and I'm here with.
Jola Fontaine, Director of Funded Programs.
And as the superintendent said, we're going to be giving you an update of what's going on with regard to school improvement planning in our schools this year. Uh, we're going to be joined in a few minutes by, um, Lisa McCall, Senior Director for the Madison and Lincoln Clusters, and by Emily Glasgow, the Principal at Vestal Elementary School. First though, a bit of context. School, school improvement plans are intended to help schools increase academic performance by identifying instructional weaknesses, selecting new instructional strategies, setting achievement goals, and assessing results. Beginning in the nineties, all public schools in Oregon were required to develop and implement a school improvement plan. Since then, Portland schools have implemented plans based on district developed processes, timelines and formats with varying degrees of success. As the superintendent mentioned, in February of twenty thirteen, we learned in a report to the board by the District Performance Auditor that while some principals believe the plans provide benefit, most do not use the plans to guide and lead instruction. The auditor recommended that if the district chose to change its process and format, it should consider the Oregon Department of Education's recommended approach that uses an automatic planning tool. In a response to the auditor's report, the superintendent wrote, "We will assess how well the ODE recommended tool can effectively serve all schools. We hope that the tool can be customized to better align with our strategic priorities around racial equity and our key performance indicators." The tool now called Indistar had already been required for use by the Oregon Department of Education in our fifteen focus and priority schools. And this year, beginning this year, it's also required in our other Title I schools, so a total of thirty-two schools altogether. During the twenty thirteen fourteen school year, the regional administrators, in collaboration with the Office of Teaching and Learning and Student Support, reviewed both the tool and its implementation in our focus and priority schools. We looked at especially at how the tool aligned with our district achievement priorities and our successful schools framework. Based on this review, was a regional administrator's recommendation to the superintendent that Indistar would be evaluated, abused by all of our schools. It is especially useful now that it's been tailored by the state working with, um, the districts to thirty-four indicators of work. The superintendent supported this recommendation and in May, last May, an implementation plan was shared with our principals. And you can see the timeline up on the screen. Last May, we met with all the principals here in the board room and shared with them our expectation that this would be the tool used in all of our schools. We shared with them the plan for providing orientation and training and the use of the tool over the course of the summer. And the expectation that's beginning this last August and going through December, that each of our schools who hadn't already done so would be doing a self-assessment that is part of the tool and that Joe will be talking with you about. Our plan then is for the schools, having finished a self-assessment, to use that information to identify their priorities and to develop comprehensive achievement plans between winter break and spring break. Comprehensive achievement plans is the same term, the term they use in Indistar for school improvement plans, same meaning. Our district objective is that by, all schools have a cap in place aligned to the district priorities and successful schools framework to guide the work as we all plan together for fifteen sixteen. City directors have been monitoring this ongoing work during their monthly meetings with individual principals. And Joe and his staff and funded programs have been providing orientation and training as well as technical consultation and individual supportive principals and school teams. So I'm talking about the development of this tool, Joe's going to show you what it actually looks like in practice.
So the Indistar system is a web-based, uh, tool designed to guide schools through the school improvement process. That'll also customize their work to creating a transparent product that's easily managed and monitored. The work will generate a comprehensive achievement plan that will replace the previously required school improvement plans. The state of Oregon's been using Indistar for a little over four years. Uh, by the fall of two thousand fifteen, all Oregon schools will be expected to use Indistar to draft their caps and, and present them to their districts. My charge is to kind of walk you through the tool a little bit and answer questions that you may have about that. So what I've done is rather than running through, putting the whole tool on there and diving through it, which is very technical and very deep, I've just taken snapshots of the critical pages for, for me to share with you. Um, this is the front page and it shows that this is a coded product, which means that all schools, even Carina schools that are, um, um, uh, alternative schools, all have codes that you can access, uh, these, uh, their programs. These will also be available to the public, so the public can also see each school's program if they so desire. That makes it extremely transparent. It is a product that is given to all school districts by, uh, the Oregon Department of Education, so there can be some commonality in the design product. This is the front page of Sitten Elementary Schools' cap. And I chose it since I had been at Sitten for the last couple of years, I'm, I'm very familiar with it and I wanted to just maybe walk you through a couple of technical aspects of the tool that I can show you by using their page. Most importantly, you'll notice that the, um, this process right here, there's a three-step process, it's continuous improvement. Also over here, you'll see that there's a snapshot that helps you track a lot of information that comes out of the product as it's used. Now each school in Portland Public has begun the assessment process. They sit down with a small team of teachers, building leaders, and they examine what the school has been doing using the thirty-four indicators in the tool. You'll see here in the assessment thing that it says thirty-four out of thirty-four were assessed by that team. And they examine each individual school using those research-based indicators to identify which of those things are really going to change the work at the school. Prior to doing that assessment, they establish in their team the three goals that will move their school forward. They examine their data and they examine what, what the school and community recognize as work that needs to occur. They make sure it's aligned with the big three initiatives of the district and establish those as their goals as they enter into this examination of these thirty-four indicators. In the end, the team will select three, maybe four of those indicators on which to build their plan. The work here is, is very technical, I'll show you some of these indicators so you can see what the language looks like, some of it's in your slides as well. Um, but you can see it's very, um, technical, some of the terminology that's used in that process. Uh, this assessment process will help the schools identify the work they need to accomplish in their cap design and it helps them to rule out other work that may not be as critical. The second phase of the plan is the creation. This is where the work gets specific to the needs of the school. The list of tasks are created for each of the indicators. So they might have three or four indicators, but there could be a dozen, there could be twenty different tasks that need to be put into place for each of those things to really come to fruition. These tasks must be met for the product, for the indicator to truly be completed with fidelity. It's during this cap design process that all the stakeholders in the community can really have input to what needs to be occurring at that school and how it aligns to what the school's goals are. While the cap is addressing three or four indicators, there may be dozens of tasks. The third phase is to monitor the progress. Now here you'll notice in the creation process, Sitten had nine out of thirty-four indicators that they selected. They launched their cap two years ago. We've since been able to refine the prod, the process so that we can sustain greater focus. Some of the schools that didn't have, um, the guidance that we can provide now had twenty, thirty indicators, which made their caps, in some cases seventy to eighty pages long. Very unwieldy, very difficult to use and manage. Um, somewhat similar to some of the SIPs that we had written in the past, actually. This third phase is where you really monitor the work that you've done and you've created. Sitten again, launched theirs two years ago, so if, as you look carefully at it, you'll see that they, they have four of nine, um, of their goals, uh, completed. Also, as you examine this a little more carefully, um, you'll notice that this page show, can show you in the box the last time that the page was opened, the last time that they added a task, the last time they completed a, a task. So if you're a, a community member or a staff member who wants to know the progress of one particular initiative inside your school, you can log onto this page and see exactly the progress that's going on. This is a, a new level of transparency that we've never had with the school improvement plans. The fifteen Portland Public Schools that have designated, have been designated for formal school improvement planning by the Oregon Department of Education have been using this tool for two years. The rest of our schools are in the assessment phase of their planning. And, and many of them are actually done with that phase right now. That part, that process can take anywhere from two to eight hours, uh, but the staffs have been, are being compensated for putting in that extra work. Um, what I've done here is I've pulled from, um, from the list of indicators, these are the thirty-four indicators and the five areas or categories that they break out into. And the reason I've shared this slide is to show just how well it does align with our successful schools framework. So you can see from these topics that it fits very nicely into the work that we're already doing. It's got your community components, it's got your leadership and effective educator, uh, components. If during the course of the year, uh, the school clearly needs to create a new and urgent focus, then the appropriate indicator can be selected by a senior director and recommended goal and corresponding tasks can be generated. So just because they may go through the three-step process doesn't edge the thing into stone, it's still very malleable. The indicators that are selected, those are hard to get off, off the list, you can add them or you can complete them. But, uh, they, those don't go away so easily, the tasks in the system though can be added and refined, which is very helpful because when you first make your plan, you know, there's always Plan B and you end up adding additional things. This is a snapshot of Sitten's actual plan and the nine indicators that they have in their plan. And I just shared this, uh, picture with you to show you that, um, when they are completed, you can see that they turn green. That's what these down here are, these are four completed tasks. I also shared this slide to show you how Dana Nuremberg's name is already included in this cap and as you know, uh, she's the new principal there at Sitten. And that's one of the real beauties of this tool is that, um, in administrative transition, the new administrator can come in and actually pick this up and the work up in the progress. So that it's not like our current system, which is you would have to basically read the SIP and try to understand where things are at. This, the current SIP document does not help track that information for you, so you would basically have to go out and research with each individual person who's driving the improvement, where it is in its status. This document shows you not just where it is, but you can drill down inside each of these to find out which tasks are listed for it and how many of those tasks are completed. I'm sorry Steve, I know it's such small print, that's why I've, I've tried to make a copy for you guys. I'm going to. Oh, okay. You can see, um, I'm, I'm going to drill down a little bit on this one right here, um, just so you can see, this one is completed about eighty percent, it has ten tasks. And rather than showing you all ten tasks, I just want to show you what it looks like when you drill into it a little bit. And I just cut and pasted some information off of that page, but basically much larger print. And, um, this particular, this is the indicator here that they're working on. You can see the responsible staff member is the principal and that they expect to have this one done by June of two thousand fifteen. This particular indicator had ten tasks assigned to it and they've got eighty percent of them are completed. These are the two that are not yet complete yet, okay? You can see who is responsible for getting it complete, the date they have targeted for it. And so what this does is as you get into the tool, it's hard to lose track as to what the work is and who's responsible for it. And I mean, best laid plans, even if you have a deadline and you don't meet that deadline, the tool will say basically, okay, you missed your deadline. And it helps prompt you to look at your deadlines and examine why that's not been completed. It may be that maybe the resources weren't in place, maybe you just forgot to update your, your plan. But the tool will help a little bit in that process and, um, and that's one of the pieces that we don't currently have in a SIP is, is once it's drafted in the fall, it's done till the next fall. This actually will continue to inform us about the pro- progress. If you were, um, if you were a community member and you had an initiative in this, in the cap that you really wanted to know about, you could log on, you could see exactly where it's at, what the timelines are, and, and if it is moving forward at the pace it was originally planned. Uh, let's, I just wanted to take, um, a moment to just kind of tell you that some differences between the tool. The school improvement plans that we currently have, they're drafted once a year in the fall. Uh, the goals in these documents can be created without a lot of direction or organization or oversight by the district. Uh, while they, while they are submitted to the district, they're difficult to monitor because of their actual form. Uh, the process offers no guarantees of stakeholder involvement or oversight in the drafting of that document either. Their content was difficult to review or cite if you happen to be a new person coming into the building. And once again, each winter or each fall, it's, a new one is drafted, it's not necessarily coherent from one year to the next. The cap is actually easily monitored by any stakeholder, it's accessible on the internet, it can be, uh, altered to meet the ever-changing needs of the school. As you lay out your plan and then you discover that you need to take it in a different direction, you can. If you have ambitions and you're not meeting your goals, you don't have to wait until the next year to redesign your plan. You can go, hey, this isn't working, we need to go to Plan B now. It reports progress and results before the school year ends, so you don't have that, that, um, examination of the school and whatever accomplishments and failures you may have had in the spring. You can recognize those as you're moving the school forward. Uh, you can also adjust your resources where you may not have known you needed them as you're moving forward. It provides a timeline for completion that helps keep the work tracked and it serves as a way for the document to, um, measure progress that is made and the work that's still effectively, uh, required to effectively improve student achievement in each school. Now I personally use this tool in two different school districts and two different schools. Uh, I find it to be very friendly and malleable, um, and it really met the needs of the school improvement project management that I've done in those other institutions. Additionally, narrowing the scope of our school improvement work to research, uh, to, to the thirty-four research-based indicators provides the district the ability to track our school improvement trends in ways that we've never been able to before. Uh, this information may become useful to us as we examine how to organize our professional development or how we might refocus budget. Because now we can really identify where we're, where we're all placing our work to move our schools forward in a way that's different than ever before. This tool will provide us new opportunities and greater transparency in our school improvement work. Now we have with us today, uh, a senior director and a school principal who can also share with you some of their, uh, information about what it looks like or feels like to them at, at their level. at their level.
Have a great, go ahead and have you guys come up, then we'll work at some questions after that.
Did you guys coordinate your dresses? When you retire, it's amazing.
That's really impressive.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith and Director of the Board. My name is Lisa McCall. I am the Senior Director for schools in both the Lincoln and Madison Cluster. And then Emily Glasgow, she is the principal of Vestal, which is a K-8 school. This is her second year. She's a very strong instructional leader, and she'll be able to share her personal experience with portions of the CAP, which is the SES assessment piece of the CAP. But, for myself and the other senior directors, our roles in this process is one of support. And we do that by our monthly visits, where we go out and visit with the schools, the principals and staff, and sit down and discuss how we can best support the schools and their goals, particularly in this SES assessment piece of that. And what that looks like is looking at the data, looking at their goals, and using the principal's monthly checklist, you heard about that last week, and that is aligned with our district priorities. And so, you know, we have a conversation. We understand and we know that this process is one that all schools are involved in, and our goal is to support the schools in this process. And we do that in a multiple ways, such as providing support for the teams to get together, if that includes teachers. You know, there's funds that Superintendent Smith set aside to allow for schools to use so that they can bring teachers to hire subs to come in so that the teams can meet and collaborate and work on the indicators in selecting their goals. And, from my perspective, it has been a smooth process, and I'm going to let Emily tell you about her experience with that process.
Yeah, so I think my job is just to tell you really briefly what this has felt like at the ground level, and, you know, we're still very new to CAP. I think, like Joe said, we just completed our assessment phase and are sort of planning how to move into our creation phase. I pulled together a leadership team representing all the key programs in my school to work on the assessment phase last month. So that included at Vestal, a primary elementary teacher, an upper elementary teacher, a middle school teacher, a special ed teacher, an ESL teacher, myself and my assistant principal. And we invited in Leslie Odell from Title I to help support us and facilitate our assessment process so that we could be really efficient and have somebody who knew more about the tool than we did there with us. And we were actually able to move through all thirty-four indicators in a two-hour block after school one day, and I was able to compensate the teachers that were involved with the money that Lisa spoke of. And it was a really useful, it was an efficient process, and like Joe said, the tool did feel really user-friendly. But it was not just a compliance process, it actually felt meaningful to me and I think to the teachers that were involved, and gave us a chance to sort of re-articulate for ourselves the goals we were already working on, put some language behind them, and then do some prioritizing, because the tool has you rank on each of the thirty-four indicators, are we implementing this fully at this point, are we partially implementing, or are we not implementing at all? And then, is this a priority for us, high, low, medium? And is it kind of possible within our scope? Like, is this more something that's a district or a state thing, or is this something we really would have control over, creating some action steps and moving? So, again, it's really user-friendly, it's really easy, but in two hours, we were really able to kind of do some meaningful work. And the process for me shed light on, you know, most things we were pretty much aligned on and we were able to move really quickly through, but there were a few points where at the table, we all kind of stopped and we weren't in alignment, and we had to really stop and hammer out, like, oh, I thought we were here, and I thought we were full, I thought we were partial. To me, this is a priority, to me, it's not, here's why, and there was some meaningful discussion there, even in that step. So that's where we are now. We've completed that, I would say there's about ten of the thirty-four indicators that came out as both high priority and needing work in terms of where we are with implementation. So our next step will be to pull that same team back together in January and look at those ten and decide, you know, which three or four are we going to really focus in on that are most aligned with the district's three and our current three, and, you know, the work that we know that we're already engaged in and have some traction on. And then we'll sort of decide how we're going to involve the rest of the stakeholders in the process of creating the plan between January and March. So that will involve our School Site Council, our PBIS team, because that's kind of one of the buckets of work that we're really focused on this year, and the larger faculty. So there'll be some going back and forth. We'll probably farm some of the creation of action steps out to those different teams and then have them all come back through the instructional leadership team and School Site Council to make sure we have a comprehensive plan by March. And then one of the things I really like about this tool versus all the other school improvement plan tools I've used over the last ten years or so in different districts, is that it's not just that annual, like, and we'll see it again next year, like, there's actually this live process of that we're, you know, we're supposed to be setting different deadlines for all these different action steps. And then I'm supposed to be checking in and helping everybody in my school community check in and say, you know, we said we were going to do this by June, did we do it? Did we not do it? Why didn't we do it? What's on our plate for next year? So it feels like it has the potential to be more of a live planning and improvement document than anything that I've worked with before. So, we'll see, we're in the middle of it.
I'd open to questions. Colleagues, Greg?
Thank you for the presentation, it's great to see, and it's good to hear that it's feeling more like a living document, something that actually helps you do your work, rather than something that feels laborious and disengaged from your work and then you put on a shelf and, as you said, come back to it any year, or two, or three. So, thank you for that. I just have a question about, many of our schools are lucky enough to have additional resources, sometimes their partners, sometimes their extended learning opportunities. Our reading initiative, we have lots of partners involved, the All Hands Raise partnership is focusing on. Can you talk to me a little bit about how we imagine incorporating those into this? Because it seems like a good place, right, to engage our partners and say, hey, you're responsible for this, and hold each other accountable?
I can speak to it in the Vestal context, if that's helpful. I mean, we, so we're a new sun school this year, and so our School Site Council and Sun Advisory Council are one and the same this year as we're building. So sun will be integral to this whole process and will be part of the planning, and one of our big buckets of work is around family and community partnerships and engagement so that, you know, they'll be heavily involved in that. We're also partnered this year with Reading Results, with Blosser Center, with several Playworks, with several of these other initiatives that I know you're speaking of. So I, they will all be featured prominently in our CAP, because they are the action steps we're currently taking to do some of the work we need to do. So we'll be, you know, I don't know what that will look like in the tool, as in, are we making them responsible of the outcomes? Who's responsible for this? Like, who does it say is responsible? But they'll certainly be named as the action steps we're taking and the levers that we're using to try to move our school. And we'll bring them into the planning process, I think, as appropriate, between January and March.
I just want to follow up a little bit on that, because I was surprised that the stakeholders were coming in later. I mean, I guess that's just my past experience. And particularly, not only were they coming in later, but that, like you said, there seemed to be some missing, I'm looking for the parent, we're in here, I mean, you said site council, so I'm assuming parents there, but I'm just not seeing stakeholder engagement in this, which I think is really important to a school, to have buy-in from your community. So, where does that really fit?
And I think it varies. It varies from school to school. For example, some schools have a leadership team that includes parents on their leadership team, and so if that group is working on the SES assessment piece, that does include parents, but it does vary from school to school.
One of the five indicator areas that Joe talked about is family and community involvement.
Right, I saw that in there. That's why I was surprised that they weren't coming in until so late.
But, it may come out as a priority of their school's planning process that they need to do more in that area. So when you're assessing, what are your priorities? It could be for a given school, that they need to do more with family and community partners, and that'll come out in the process. And there will be tasks then to set aside for them to do, to bring them into it more. So depending on how your community's approach their process to begin with, there is, if they haven't done that, it'll come out in the self-assessment tool, it'll come out in the plan that follows that.
And I have to add around families, I mean, for me, the process of completing a school improvement plan or a CAP has never been isolated from the other ongoing work in the school. So, we spent the whole fall as a new sun school doing community forums and community inventories and all kinds of different meetings to hear from our families and community partners about, you know, what's working at Vestal, what do we need to develop at Vestal? And all of that was brought into the conversation around the assessment. So when I was sitting at the table with teachers completing the assessment and looking at those indicators that Greg's talking about that have to do with family and community engagement, we were drawing on the knowledge from all of those conversations we had with families this fall to rank them. So, you know, we were the ones at the table for that conversation, but we were using all that input we've got all fall, and then they will be involved in the creation plan.
Well, I think that's great that you were all talking about what you did with parents, but I really think you need to have parents in at the get-go. You need to have some, somebody from your community in at the get-go on these kinds of things.
There's been training sessions for the schools on how to best manage this tool. And so, they've all been, it's been discussed with all of them to engage their communities, whether it's through their site council, LSAC, whatever parent groups they have or community agencies that they're working with, to ensure that there is voice in the plan. The reason you don't see as many in that very first piece of assessment is because the language is pretty technical, and it can be difficult for them to understand all the different work that's going on. And so, that's...
I don't go there, I don't buy that. That's okay, thank you, Joe.
And maybe I could, yeah, I think I had something, so thank you so much for the presentation, and I sort of, in reading through this and the previous information we got before, I was, on the one hand, really glad that we're moving away from the old school improvement plan model, but also still saying, it felt as if the role of the site council had been diminished in this, and so that kind of authority and direct involvement. So I'm hoping that maybe over time, as we roll this out, that that can be brought back in on the front end. And along the same lines, just in terms of the transparency, it's, we have the web-based and the consistency, and that's all positive, but I also have concerns just in terms of its accessibility, in terms of not all families having web access or having the ability, I mean, as you say, there are technical pieces to this. So, you know, certainly our, the old school improvement plans were not things that were, as you said, they were not living documents that everyone had front of mind and that were sort of, you know, front and center in a community. But I'm concerned, there's all the strengths, and I'm really excited to hear directly from the principal about them, that there's still a piece of how will every parent at the school, every stakeholder, every community member really, as many will be able to benefit from this, but I'm concerned about those who might not be able to as well. So it just feels to me like that's a piece of this that we need to keep working on.
One thing I would say, there's just one thing we're being encouraged to do, is once we get to the point where our plan is created, we're being encouraged to create sort of a one-page, very visual summary of what our big three priorities are and kind of what the bulleted action steps are that are highest leverage under each one, so that we can give that to everyone in our community. With the goal being that you could walk into my school and ask anybody, what are the big three? And they could tell you.
Oh, that's great, yeah.
And I've seen already some models of other PPS schools, one-pagers, that are nice to work from, that we'll work for.
And those would be in several languages, right?
In our school, they would need to be.
We certainly have some parents who would take that access code and would spend hours and hours drilling through it. But we have others, you know, who aren't going to be able to do that, so.
So I think I'm going to echo what my colleagues have said. Before I was on the board, I was a site council co-chair years and years ago, and it was probably the most miserable experience I've had as a parent. And in large part because the principal at the time, who we were working with, just continually limited what we were allowed to talk about or look at, and there was no sense at all about community engagement or the culture of the school or whatever, it was mostly about test scores, to be honest. And it was horrible. And part of the reason that I got involved with community parents for public schools, and we were trying to do site council training so parents could really know how to proactively step into the role of being on a site council and understand what their rights were and how they could be effective and impactful. So, as I'm hearing about this new tool, it sounds in many ways very positive, and I'm really pleased to hear how you're using it, but I guess I'm also concerned about the role of parents and the role of the site council in the whole process, and wanting to make sure that parents are a big part of it, so.
Anybody else? Steve?
I'm not so concerned about the parents as I am concerned about the teachers and people putting this together. Who owns Indistar anyway? This reads like, a lot of this reads like the new reform movement in education, and we're going to ask you to do all these things and make all these, put it all together like this with, and I quote, "Use instructional strategy initiatives that are grounded in evidence-based practices. Strengthen the core academic program. Increase the quality and quantity of learning time. Cut out all the recesses." Yeah, that'll increase the quality of... Yeah, that'll increase the time, the learning time that you have, the quantity of the learning time. No, but that's what happens, that's the kind of stuff that happens with this kind of language. So, who owns Indistar? I mean, we bought this program from somebody, or?
The state.
State, did the state buy it from somebody? Does anybody know?
The tool was developed by the Academic Development Institute in Illinois in conjunction with the state of Illinois. Other state departments of education have been looking at this tool as an option for use in schools. Oregon Department of Education adopted this and is requiring it for many of our schools, our Title I schools, schools in improvement, and...
Focus and priority are all part of it.
Focus and priority. And it has been customized, one of the things the superintendent asked for was some customization for our district, and we reduced the number of indicators, we've been working on the language within them, and we will continue to do that. But that's where it came from, and that's who sponsors it, and that's who pays for it, ODE pays for it.
So they bought it from somebody? And then they sent it out, and now they're going to tell everybody to use this? Is that what you, that's kind of what I, I'm sorry, I missed the very beginning.
The state requires it for all of our title schools, and eventually is moving toward all of our schools, and so we're actually one year ahead of the game on this one here in using it within all of our schools in the district.
When you say moving towards all our schools, are they actually going to, have they said, we're going to do next year all the schools? That's what they've said? And do, is our lobbyist down all over them? Ask that of the superintendent. Is our lobbyist down complaining about the fact that they're telling us how we have to set up our school improvement plans?
We actually have embraced it as being a valuable tool, and what, part of what we were doing, and part of what we were doing since we had a number of schools who were already being required to use it, is tried to figure out how to, again, how do we customize it so it aligns with the work that we're already doing? But how do we not have multiple tools going for multiple purposes? But how do we have a single tool that we've got all of our schools on, that we are streamlining and building into our regular practice, that we really think drives school improvement? So, that's been our effort, is to make this work for us. And actually, I feel like we've done a great job making it work for us. I've been really excited about how people are responding to it, and I know this drives you crazy, Steve.
It absolutely drives me crazy. That we're sitting here, doing all of this stuff, and spinning our wheels, when what we really need to do is be out there and individually instructing kids who are way behind in reading. I mean, that's what we need to be doing. How many reading teachers do you need at Vestal? Could you use three or four more? Huh? Yeah, we could use three or four more. Are you using, the plans you are using, I mean, are you using the Common Core and asking all your teachers to relate to the Common Core around all their reading now? What are you using then to measure whether or not your kids are at grade level? You can't use the Common Core, the S-Back next year, because it doesn't do that, right? So what test do you use to measure all your kids who are at grade level?
I, a whole range, and I would love more, that's a whole nother conversation I would love to have. But, I mean, everything from Easy CBM to DIBELS to embedded curriculum embedded tests. It depends what skill we're trying to test. So actually, one of the things, just back to CAP, that I liked, is, I mean, one of our big buckets of work is RTI at Vestal. So we're really working on strengthening core instruction.
There's some really good stuff in here.
But also interventions, right?
Yeah, there's great stuff in here, and I can find a lot of great stuff.
And it gives us the language to name that, I guess is what's helpful. And, you know, that's what we're working on already. This isn't telling us we have to work on it, we know we're working on it, but it's kind of giving us a place to articulate it and say, so what does that really look like? What do we really have to do and by when? And who's going to hold us accountable to doing that? So...
How many days? How many days? How many days? I was talking to a teacher, to a principal in an elementary school last week or week before, I can't remember. And she had her teachers out of her classrooms, out of her classrooms, taking, taking basically district mandated stuff, over 16 days. 16 days out of the classroom. How many are your teachers going to be out of the classroom this year for mandated things?
Each teacher?
Each teacher? Yes, she had, she maintained her whole school was out for 16 days.
That's not true in our case. I don't know. I mean, we certainly send teachers to the trainings they need to go to. So people have come into the system at different times, and it missed different parts of the curriculum rollouts and things like that. So we send teachers that need to catch up on the, you know, Scott Forrestman enhancements or different pieces of the Bridges curriculum that they need further training on.
If you were a...
But I would say that's a couple of days per teacher, per year.
That's it?
Yeah.
So specific to this, though? Because this is the topic we're on, not on general when our teachers are out.
This is, this is specific to this.
Excuse me, I'm talking.
Yeah, I know, but you're also...
So specific to this, you said two hours, correctly?
This was two hours of compensated time after school, and then it will be some more between January and March.
Thank you.
But not a ton, not a ton, actually.
Great question.
So thanks, I have another question, just in terms of, so the new climate survey coming out, and so I'm assuming that as that rolls out and gets integrated into our ongoing, that this, that also will be woven in and we'll figure out a way to have them connect? And I'm not sure what that would look like.
It's a good task, right? It's a good task to put in the action plan to try to get really good feedback on that and then use it somehow to monitor.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
And this tool allows you to actually put all those type of documents, historical documents inside of it as well, so it's not just static. You can add that stuff that's important to the work moving forward.
That's great. Anybody else? The hour's getting late. I know you guys are probably ready.
Quick.
Matt?
And this is, the one thing that I think that, maybe to get to your point, Pam, earlier, is how do we, you know, where are the stakeholders engaged, the stakeholder engagement in this? And one of the things that, that has been, or will be rolled out over this next year is a new sort of climate survey. So I'm, I'm really interested in how these multiple layers will play on themselves. For one, and I think that the second one is, and that's the sort of my, what I'm hearing, and I'm sure experience is different across the district, but what I'm hearing is that as a tool, as a tool that can be used, that can be consistent across your instructional staff, and in terms of creating expectations across your school community, it seems like something that has been worthwhile so far. And, and that's something that is important to me, because there are a lot of tools out there. This is a tool. If it doesn't work, it's not effective for me or the way I communicate to my staff or my community. But if it is, it could actually prove to enhance what you're trying to do, and also create some level of accountability, too. So, and you mentioned that a little bit, Emily, on what did we meet, what didn't we meet, why not, what is the next timeline that we can meet it at, and so on. So I'm interested in two things. One is how do we, how are we going to layer some of the new information, new stakeholder data that comes in? And the second piece is, how good of a tool is this for actual accountability on a school level? I mean, it sounds like on a district level, this is, it's harder to track because there's a lot of narrative, there's a lot of moving parts. But on a school level, how do you, how do you measure it in terms of accountability?
You've been to that thing as a principal?
So, yeah. I'm happy to do that. So at a school level, it's actually very, very easy to use. You may have a plan, a design in place, and then have something come in like the survey, this community survey you're talking about, that may totally alter the direction that you're going. With this tool, you can put it in place, and you can change, you can change the course of your work, if it really informs a different path.
Right.
You can, you can delete future tasks and create the new tasks that are going to take you where you want to go with it, if, if, if the work needs to be changed. If, as far as how it informs districts, I can tell you that actually, by, by the use of 34 indicators, we're able to now identify the work that Emily's going to do at her school and plot it, if you will, on a spreadsheet. And if you just take Title I schools, the 30 Title I schools, 34 indicators, boom, you can see right now where the work's being done, what people are focusing on, and it's going to provide my department an opportunity to look more carefully, more carefully at the work the schools are doing. So instead of having eight to 10 schools all trying to do similar projects and a lot, and using their professional development money to do those projects, I will be better informed about how I might be able to support those schools that are trying to get the same work done.
Right, so it sounds like, I mean, one of the challenges that we've had is replicability of certain programs, and, you know, left hand not knowing what the right hand is doing kind of thing. So what you're suggesting is that, in fact, this could be a tool, district-wide, that you could see, okay, this is happening over here, now how can we get them, administrators or, or teachers or whoever that cohort might be, to help support another school who's going through the same...
We're currently using that, we're currently using it that way right now in my department for the focus priority schools.
So learning communities developing...
It's, it's, it's all plotted.
Educators, okay, thank you.
That's great. So Joe, Emily, Lisa, and Greg, thank you very much for being here, and thank you for showing us. It sounds like a wonderful tool. Very excited to see it roll out in a place else.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys.
Okay. So patiently waiting. Per statute, the board annually adopts its cash management investment policy. Superintendent Smith, would you like to go ahead and introduce this, I think our last item?
Cherie Lewis, Senior Director of Cash Management and Accounting, come on up.
Good job, Cherie, here again.
God, and people are leaving again.
Well...
(laughter)
How can I say, this is the second lightning in the subject for the evening.
We're glad to see you. Oh, sorry.
Everybody just loves to take accounting as a major. I know it. It's just all that you guys drive for.
Takes us first special type.
That's true. I want to thank the board, Chair, Superintendent, and what's left of the audience for letting me be here today. And I want to introduce Barb. Barb Gibbs is the new Treasury Manager. We had Hank Korn for many years. Barb comes to us just under a year, and with 30-plus years of investment and policy and directions around investment and cash. So what we're trying to do today is bring to you our already existing cash and investment policy, and bring it consistent manner, so as every year that we bring forth the comprehensive annual financial report, which is the CAFR, we'll bring forth the renewal of the cash and investment policy at the same time. Because as we do that, it's a financial instrument. It allows us to be more active in the, in the, in the investment world. And as we all know, we need as much money as we can, particularly around the bonds, to get the interest in the money. So how we invest them need to be active and, and ongoing. So we brought forth you the resolution, and we brought with you a few minor edits on the policy, but the only major change was on page 10 of the investment policy. They just made a few minor edits of it. So we're asking, this will be the first read to the policy, then we'll actually come back for the second read to ask for you to pass the policy. And I don't quite have that date. I'll have to work Amanda and Marjana up exactly when I'm going to come the second time, because we're trying to get everything in.
I've got it for you, don't worry.
We'll get it in at future. So if there's any technical questions, I'll rely to her. Simple questions I might want to answer, how's that?
So why the changes on the signatures?
Go ahead.
The changes on the facsimile signature?
The electronic signature.
The electronic signature?
Electronic signature. It, to us, it didn't seem to matter whether it was specifically only the CFO. As you know, when Neil retired, we had a bit of an issue because we didn't have a CFO.
Right.
And so we did have another policy that talked about our Chief Operating Officer from back in the day. So we thought that that could be something that could be, because we, we are, we have signatories, and Cherie is one on our bank accounts, that in a pinch, we could use that. So we thought that that might not necessarily be something that would have to have specifically the CFO. The same time, we also thought that it's very important for the CFO to approve opening new bank accounts, but we're trying to close a bank account now, and we probably really don't need the CFO to close an account with 7,000 bucks in it. So we thought that that would be something that just shouldn't, maybe shouldn't be in the policy, per se.
Okay, good. Other, Greg?
Well, I had a question about the only other change, or almost only other change, is about, no, about the, actually, the closing of the count, any additions or deletions, because if right now we're trying to close an account, and right now there's $7,000 in it, there could potentially be an account that has $1 million or $2 million in it, and where that money goes or transfers, like, I just, I don't understand why.
Right. It was, it was an old money market account at a commercial bank in town that decided not to pay us a decent rate of interest. We have worked very hard, beginning with Neil, back this spring, to try to get more of our community banks to basically bid for our funds or offer to pay us a decent rate of return. We have Columbia Bank is a regional bank, they are based in Tacoma, and they just bought West Coast Bank that was out of Lake Oswego. Willamette Community Bank is one down the valley that has an office here, so we've placed funds with them, as long as the return to the district is at a good level. Last spring, we talked to Bank of the Cascades, they're an Oregon bank, and they were not interested in paying us a decent rate. They've come back this fall, and we opened some accounts last week, and we're placing some funds with them, because that's our trade-off. We have a responsibility to get the maximum amount of return for the taxpayers and for the district in a safe way.
I understand that. I guess I just don't understand why we're making the change to take off the CFO responsible for closing an account or making any additions or changes.
Creating the account, basically, we allow for the CFO to make the decision, as we did with Bank of the Cascades. So as we go and create the ability to create the bank, but when we get to a point when it's, we've done it, we've had it for years, it's not being financial, the CFO has our informed, but as when Neil left or when Heidi left, we've had gaps in them, or we have had interim people. Basically, allowing this latitude allows the flexibility of me informing the other people in the leadership that these are the issues, there, it doesn't financially stable for us to keep that there. So we move the cash out of that account, move it somewhere else, we get better rate of return. By not having, let's say, Ryan here, who didn't have the ability to make any investment decisions, and we had five months, four months, whatever, when between, when he was here versus when we had Yusuf just arrive, we couldn't, with this title, couldn't do that latitude. I'm a signator, but I'm not the ability to actually do that. So this gives us the latitude to talk to Superintendent and the other people, and give me the latitude, because I'm still on the account, to make the decisions with leadership and still get us the best rate of return.
I guess my concern is, it sounds like every instance where this has been a problem is when there's been a vacancy. And so it's almost that I would rather have a vacancy written, in the case of a vacancy, here's the process. Because right now, what this could be is, you said, you know, of course, we would inform the CFO, but that's not in this policy. And so I could see a staff member taking it upon him or herself, maybe having informed people, making a change, and then somebody coming back and say, well, wait, that wasn't the right change. And then there's a lack of accountability for who made that change?
No, because there's still two signatures on at the banks, so no one count can be closed without two authorizing signatures on the account. So if we took that one, like, we had to add Tony Magliano onto the account, so when Neil left, we had to add Tony Magliano onto the account, but as Tony would tell you in the past, I don't understand how that works, so I'm relying on you to help me understand the complexities of why we would do that. So there's always one person in the district, either in my shop or the CFO, there has to be at least two to three signatures on that account at any one given time, that understand the financial stability of the district, and you can never change it and just have one signature. So by just saying the CFO, that was basically just one signature in the CFO, allowing the authority, this now gives us the latitude to have that diversity in that pocket.
Okay.
And does the superintendent determine the signatures? Or who, or does the board approve them? I don't know that.
The superintendent, we work with the superintendent in their roles of what they have the authority to, and we ask the opinion of leadership. As in, when Neil left, we didn't want to just leave me, who would be the signature? So we ask, who would you like to choose to be the person to represent the district as the signature of the...
So that process is an internal management versus a board approval of something? Okay, that's the only question I have.
Unless, I miss...
Right. Tom?
Thank you. The, these, these money markets are not insured, is that correct?
Let me answer that.
I'm sorry?
Money markets, are they insured or non-insured?
Yes, not only are they insured, but we have a collateral program, ORS 295. We're, the investments are under 294, and that's what we specify there. ORS 295 is a different actual section of the legis, of legislation that says that the state treasurer runs a collateral pool and requires all of the banks, first, the banks that we invest in, like Bank of the Cascades, needs to be on their approved list, and we need to notify them that we're going to be banking with them. The state treasurer monitors all of their balances of all public funds. If the bank gets in trouble, they can require the collateralization of those funds to be 110% to cover the public investment. And over and above that, there's a cross-collateralization between the banks, where if for some reason 110% didn't work, and there was any possibility of loss to a public entity, all of the banks would share on a pro-rata basis their obligation to make that entity whole. I helped write the legislation back in 1990, 2007, so I got it down.
Good job. So, so that's, that's an insurance that's not afforded to the private sector?
That's over and above the FDIC and absolutely not, not afforded to anyone.
Yeah, because most money markets are not insured.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you. Helped.
I mean, a class on financial, okay.